Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 7:05. If everybody can rise to say the pledge of allegiance, that would be fantastic. Perfect. So I am hoping that I can get a motion to approve the meeting and consent agenda. And a second, okay, perfect. All in favor? Okay, that's eight oh. Perfect. So the next item on our agenda is the election of officers, at which point I will turn this over to Ms. Stowe.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. Okay, we'll do this again. We will be electing officers in accordance with Policy 9121. The floor is open for nominations for chair. Do I, are there any other, are there any nominations? Michael Joseph? Oh, can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. So the floor is open for nominations for chair. Thank you.
So I'd like to nominate Karen Kowalski.
There doesn't need to be a second, but if anyone wants a second, there you go, Cody. Okay. Are there any other nominations? I'd like to nominate Karen Hirsch. Okay, would you like to say anything, Michael Joseph? Okay. I am the... Well, okay, but I'm pleased to nominate Karen Hirsch for chair, since I didn't get to say anything last time. And since I've had the pleasure, I know Laura spent a lot of time, I won't go through Karen's resume, to your point, Karen, but there are a few things I'd like to add, since I've had the privilege of being both vice-chair and chair. And what I especially came to appreciate as chair is that you need to set the right tone and be collaborative. And as we all know, the chair does not have more power than any other member, but you do set the tone and tenor of the board. You need to be available to respond to our constituents, our superintendent, and meet with other town bodies. Most importantly, you need to be willing to find compromise, and even if you're on the minority on the vote, you need to willingly advocate for the board vote. While Karen has had dissenting votes, she's willing to compromise after much analysis and questioning, and more often votes with the majority. Furthermore, and a real testament to her, even when she dissents, she will positively advocate for the will of the board. She has never and would never speak out against the board in any way. Karen's been a tireless advocate for our schools. Prior to her board service, she led PTAK, and that's a perfect example where you need to listen and consolidate various opinions, and then serve with one voice. Furthermore, in that role, along with our other community board roles, Karen has developed relationships with other town leaders, people like her. While on this board, she's served on the executive committee for four years, been a member of PGC, district curriculum, special ed, and most recently, the strategic planning committee. That committee spent a lot of time working to find the best direction forward for our district, and she compromised and voted to bring that plan to light. Finally, we have now seen her in action. Karen has been our interim chair while staying on as secretary, very impressive. And she has certainly shown that she can respond diligently and thoughtfully to many emails, meet with the students, her favorite part, engage and plan an agenda with Dr. Jones, meet with the legislatures, engage with the RTM, and most importantly, manage an efficient meeting. We'd be lucky to have her lead us this year. Okay, so now the process is assuming, seeing no other nominations. Can you all please pass your, who you're voting for? Please say that it's for chair, and then send it over to me.
Kathleen, should I email my vote to you?
That would be great, if you could send it to my board email. Let me see if I received Laura's email first. Hold on a second. There we go. All right, Laura Costin votes Karen Hirsch for chair. Sophie Colvin votes Karen Hirsch for chair. Karen Hirsch votes Karen Hirsch for chair. Michael Joseph votes Karen Kowalski for chair. Karen Kowalski votes Karen Kowalski for chair. Kathleen Stowe votes Karen Hirsch for chair. Wendy Visio Walsh votes Karen Kowalski for chair. And Cody Kittle votes Karen Kowalski for chair. So that is no, no majority, it's four-four. And that are the results of the election. Do we have anything else we'd like to do? Laura, Costin?
I would like to nominate Cody Kittle for chair.
I'd second that. You can, you cannot accept it.
Laura, you're so nice, thank you, but I politely pass.
I haven't even gotten to say my nice things about you.
That's okay.
Okay, I was gonna say that. I really enjoyed working with you so far on the budget, but okay, then we won't add that. Well, thank you, anyway. All right, are there any other? Anything else? Okay, do we want to, I think we just move on then. We don't need a caucus or anything, do we, Karen? We're good? Okay, all right, then I would pass it back over to you, Karen.
Okay. Nobody wants to try to revote, just double checking. No? Okay, I just, okay, so anyway.
I think we should revote.
I, if you, you may be the only one that would like to do that. The next item on our agenda then is a public hearing. Nobody else wants to vote again, right? No, that's just, okay. So, public hearing, and I was going to say, once we get to community comments, I will remind everyone that you each have three minutes. We have 31 speakers signed up tonight. So if you have someone that has come before you, that has said the same thing that you're planning to say, and you would like to just say, you know, I support that, and cede your time, that would, that's wonderful. We have an hour of public comment ahead at the start of the meeting. So if we go over that time significantly, we have to move the rest of the speakers to the end of our meeting, after we're done with the actual business of the board. So I will just remind you of the rest of the rules when we get there. But our first speaker is the high school student government.
Is the mic on? Good evening, members of the board. My name is Omar Galal. I'm the student body vice president at GHS. And I will be sharing updates from GHS, as well as speaking on a policy change that we have been working on. The holidays are just one week away, and the winter spirits have crept up on GHS. In sports news, we have transitioned from the fall season to the winter season. In the fall postseason, the girls' swimming team and the girls' cross-country teams both won their state championships, while several other varsity teams made deep runs in their state tournaments. Through November, Greenwich students from the Roots and Shoots Club led a Thanksgiving food drive that collected over 2,100 pieces of food, and raised $10,000 that went towards grocery gift cards. And as the holidays have been steadily approaching, student activities hosted their annual gingerbread house competition, which was great fun earlier this week, while the senior class have been planning a cozy movie night in the student center. Two months ago, Caleb and I shared our idea to implement barcode scanners at the Cardinal Cafeteria. Today, we have a better picture of what this would look like. The cafeteria has 12 cash registers, each of which would need a one barcode scanner. Each scanner would cost approximately $300, and would be purchased from the same vendor which the media center and English department already, already used to purchase their scanners to check out books. And the near future, food services will be equipped with new software which will allow students to scan their digital school ID barcodes at the registers to pay for food through My School Bucks. And once undertaken, this initiative will accomplish two important objectives related to improving student life. First, the barcode scanners will expedite the process of purchasing food, in turn giving students much more time to eat their lunches and relax. Second, by requiring students' digital IDs to purchase lunches, barcode scanners would massively improve the efficacy of the Minga app. Digital IDs are currently on the periphery of student life at GHS, only used in particular circumstances, such as entering and exiting the building, or checking out a book from the media center. Integrating digital IDs across the cafeteria using these barcode scanners will give a large part of the student body an essential reason to use their digital IDs or the Minga app on a daily basis. So if the digital IDs or the Minga app are serious long-term objectives at GHS, we urge the Board of Ed and administration to prioritize integrating barcode scanners at the Cardinal Cafeteria as soon as possible. This is all I have for updates at GHS, and I'm excited to share with all of you our continued success. So thank you and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Good evening, members of the board. I am Caleb Kalin, the student body president of Greenwich High School. I'm here tonight to speak with you about recent student concerns and initiatives from our GHS students. First, I'd like to share some environmental updates from our GHS Environmental Action Club. During their recent meetings, the Environmental Action Club, or the EAC, has put together several initiatives and new plans for the future, which include acting on issues that are prevalent not only to GHS, but to the town of Greenwich as a whole, including cleanups and speaking at a meeting concerning gas-powered leaf blowers. I spoke to EAC leaders about the future of compost at our school, which is something of concern as GHS students expect to see new garbage bins and stations in our student centers following the holiday break. Because of this, we discussed how to educate students on recycling and composting, because these bins are being added to new stationary waste stations. Some great ideas have been brought up, and we hope to launch them before the break to make sure that the transition to this new system is as smooth as possible. In addition, I've been working closely with the Diversity Awareness Club, and I've seen promising plans for the new year. At a diversity conference held at the YWCA that I and a few of others, a few other students attended, there were many powerful and productive discussions around diversity and how it affects us as students. From seeing this, the club leaders and I were inspired to bring something similar to our school, a diversity day, similar to our existing names day at the high school. Names day, for our, a day for our ninth graders centered on anti-bullying and anti-bias, would serve as an example to follow with the creation of diversity day. Ideally, diversity day would be organized for the junior class. This way, conversations can happen at a higher level of maturity with the support of student facilitators from the various, various diversity clubs that exist at GHS. I'm excited to continue working with them to bring this event along, and along with other ideas, to continue to properly recognize, discuss, and celebrate diversity within our student body. The final point I wish to make is on our midterm and final exam policy. I'm aware that this may be a topic of the, of discussion for the board tonight, so I'd like to preface it by relaying to the board what I've heard from students, as my role entails me to do. Based on the COVID pandemic, we have had a midterm policy for the past two school years that eased the stress on students while, sorry, eased the stress on our students while allowing them to continue to learn, grow, and succeed. These policies allowed students to choose whether their midterms or end finals were worth 10% or 20% of their overall grade for a semester course. They have also included a full review day and requirements for review packets for each exam, which has, which have benefited the students greatly. I want to briefly emphasize that the students at GHS want the option to lower exam percentages, just as they have been able to do for the past two years. Students don't want to see a return of pre-COVID waiting, as it puts more stress on them unnecessarily, hindering their potential to succeed. In particular, our junior classes felt very strongly on this, and Chloe, the junior class vice president, has more to say on this topic later on. I'm excited to continue working on our future initiatives and goals at GHS. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thanks, guys. Next up is GEA. Is Lil here?
Good evening, Dr. Jones, Board of Ed members, GEA members, PTA, and our Greenwich community. Well, we have some new board members. We have a new board meeting, a new month. Some new BET, RTM members. An end of this year coming, a new year around the corner. But what has not changed? Well, we have the same problems and same issues. I'm just getting tired of speaking the same speech and not seeing anything getting done. Not funding and supporting our superintendent's budget, our original budget, so the public school can provide our students with the top-level instruction and service that all children must have access to. I feel like I'm stuck in the movie Groundhog Day, over and over, reliving every year about the budget, and talking the same things, and it gets cut all the time. But there's a difference, there's a huge difference between last year, this year, and the next year. Now, this is hurting our students, hurting our community, hurting our teachers. Facts. We had 189 students move into the community. We have transitions in our Community Connections program. Facts, utilities have increased, substitute pay has increased, still not enough. Very hard to compete when you have over just a line where they're getting paid 300. We have preschool legislation, legislation that has changed. Twenty-four, answers. On the year 24 budget, there are some staff reductions. Twenty-five, it's even more severe. Not to identify all the staffing changes, because they're not in reality yet, and to upset my staff and teachers. Ten positions. But at the same time, there's 10 positions added. Five sped, two psych, three social workers, one speech, one financial analyst. Well, maybe they're gonna find the money for us, I don't know, that could be a good thing. It doesn't, it doesn't equal out. It doesn't match up. You can't build up a program that needs to be built up at the cost of building something down. These staffing changes affects what's happening in the classroom. You've heard me for two years now, and heard me the first couple of months here. The teachers are having it hard. There's a shortage of subs, shortage of pairs. Teachers are covering. There's stress within, absenteeism is up. There's gotta be a stimulus response, cause and change. We can't keep doing this. This community is better than this. We need to fund the superintendent's budget. We need our community members to speak up, our parents. I, I'm gonna hear this speech every time. I'm gonna start talking about the positions in school that are gonna be cut. One of the first ones, which is a very drastic cut, only because it's kind of like the forgotten child, is our physical education and health department. We haven't had a coordinator since 2018. And before that, when I was lead teacher of the district, I made sure that our lessons were updated, were in compliance. I cannot, I cannot vouch to what's being taught and what's not being taught right now. They're on the chopping block for minutes. Now, I already have the data. I know in Fairfield County, I already have it when I was it. Every district has either a content leader, a coordinator, or a team leader. Greenwich likes to compare ourselves to other districts. We have nothing. I take that back. We, not to insult the people that are doing it, we have principals that are getting a stipend. Their job's to be a principal. They're not a coordinator. They don't guide the department, they're not the voice of the department. They don't understand the intricacies and their specialities. These specialists teach every single child in the Greenwich Public Schools. They do the health and wellness lessons. And if you read anything in the news about social emotional learning, dysregulation, problem solving, critical thinking, 21st skills, teamwork, that's all done at that level. And we want to cut our hours to 60? I'll have all the data for my next speech to share with you, because I know you don't want to miss out on that, so I'm gonna keep you in suspense on that. But I know Westport has 80 hours, 80 minutes, sorry. That would be a shock, I apologize. So on a positive note, I'll leave you with this little poem. When I first came to Greenwich, someone gave this to me. And I was, I'm really into 21st skills and project adventure and critical thinking, problem solving. So I always like to leave on a positive note. I don't like to be Debbie Downer, so I'm gonna read you a short little poem. It's called "Come Play With Me." "I tried to teach my children with books. They gave me only puzzled looks. I tried to teach my children with words. They passed them, often unheard. Desperately, I turned aside. 'How shall I teach my children?' I cried. Into my hand, they reached out and put the key. 'Come,' they said. 'Come, play with me.'" Thank you.
Thanks, Lil. Next up, PTA Council. Is Sue John out there? Come on up.
Chair Protem Hirsch, BOE members, Superintendent Dr. Jones, everyone here, everyone listening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm John Fisher, the Greenwich PTA Council president, and the parent of two of the 8,611 great kids in the Greenwich Public Schools. For those who may need a reminder, the PTA Council is the umbrella organization made up by and for the 15 independent PTAs in town. If anyone still hasn't joined their PTA, you need to do it tomorrow. It's a short agenda tonight, so let's talk about the elephant in the room. This elephant is a pinata. It reflects what the BET has done to the BOE and to the administration. The BET didn't give us budget guidance in September or October. And like in a pinata party, the administration and the BOE were left blindfolded and swinging away. And the administration made solid contact, delivering a lean, I got to jump, delivering a lean focused budget that accurately and realistically reflects higher contracted obligations, higher salaries, higher utility costs, higher inflation, higher enrollments, higher special education costs, new state mandates, expiring COVID-era grants and funding, and more. That realistic, practical budget accurately reflects a 6.1% real increase in the operating costs. And then, like a pinata party, the BET yanked away with guidance for a 4.3% increase. And like the, a yank of the pinata at the pinata party, it's deceptive. It's 4.3% on the original budget allocation, ignoring the 2.2% interim allocation for higher special ed costs, as well as other interim appropriations. And another yank on the pinata, the BET doesn't acknowledge or credit the millions of dollars, well more than 3 million, of revenue that the school district brings in, which goes straight into the town's accounts. The BET needs to be more intellectually honest about the real amount the town actually provides for school operations. The 4.3 guidance would require about $3 million of reduction to the proposed budget. 3 million is such a small amount for the town of Greenwich, which has a grand list of, with $29 billion in assessed value. But it's a big amount for the schools. It's teaching staff, as Lil said. It's class size. It's the quality of the pre-K program, which is a revenue generator. It's ALPS science. It's curriculum development and management. It's early years foreign language. It's PE time to develop healthy minds and healthy bodies. It's maintaining the Greenwich Public Schools as an employer of choice for education professionals at a time when it's harder and harder to attract and retain teachers. $3 million is the difference between delivering the quality of education that the children in the town of Greenwich need versus a school district that is hogtied or elephant-tied, and can't deliver on its potential or its strategic goals. PTAK urges the BOE to stand up, stand firm, and whack that BET pinata. Politics is all about expediency. Leadership is about what's doing right, about doing what is right. The leaders of our education system, you, as the leaders of our education system, need to tell the BET that the proposed 6.1% budget is what the schools need, and it's what the BET needs to approve. And be sure to tell the Board of Selectmen that as well. Thank you, and if, if you don't mind, I'd like to give this to, this elephant, to Dr. Jones. She and her team may find that this is a very useful therapeutic device over the course of the budget process.
Thanks, John. Always good to have a nice chuckle before we get into business. So next up is the community comments. As I mentioned, we have 31 speakers, which will take us well over our hour of allotted time. So if people want to stand up, and you have heard somebody else say what they plan to say, and you just want to say, I'd like to second that, we would, you know, appreciate that as well. Just a reminder, again, each person has a speak, three minutes. I'll call the name who to come up. I'll call the next name after, so if you could just be prepared to come up when it's your turn. No boisterous, inappropriate, or disrespectful conduct will be permitted. And if you want to offer objective criticism of district operation and programs, that's fine, but please be civil. Respect us in, you know, in a civil manner and whatnot, and don't denigrate the staff. So, thank you, and our first speaker up is Jen Bensabingo, followed by Pilar Lepara. Doctor Jen Bensabingo, sorry, I just had said Jennifer. Is she online?
I'm not seeing her online.
Okay, so we will, if she shows up, we'll come back to her. Next up is Pilar Lepara, followed by Doug Fanton.
Good evening. Thank you for receiving us today. I wasn't expecting to be the first one here. I don't have numbers. I, that's not my specialty. What I am is a mom. I've got four children in the district. I even share a classroom with Laura. What I come here to say is, first of all, I'm really sad that we had to rally in this way. One would think the Board of Ed would be more supportive, and would have of Dr. Jones, that you guys would give the fight without needing us to step up in this way against the Board of Ed, Board of the BET. What can I say? I've been talking to teachers, the situation as it is, even without the cuts. We need more. There's a lot of need. I don't know, like, have you been going to schools, talking to teachers? One-on-one, like, they need more support. The classrooms are too big, the special ed community. We don't have enough. We don't have what we need. As it is, the town is liable for, I have no idea how much money, but I can assure you a lot more than what they're suggesting to cut. You're not complaining to federal laws. Children need a lot more. And although Dr. Jones and Dr. Stacy, and I'm sorry, I can't pronounce her last name, they're doing their best. You only know that they're trying to do their best when you get a one-on-one meeting with them. Because otherwise, you can't see that. The system is rotten. Everybody's scared to speak up. Teachers are afraid because someone has told them along the way that if they say something that they feel is wrong, they're going to be sued personally. So they're not just scared of losing their jobs. They're scared that their lives are going to be turned upside down, which is completely sad. I think it's time for us, parents, the board of it, the administration, and the teachers to remember that we are a team, we're partners in this. Children are the most important thing. We all have their future. Just give the fight. That's what you're supposed to be doing, and you are representatives against the BET when they just, just look at numbers, which isn't even smart. If this keeps going, we're going to lose the teachers. We're going to, the town is going to get sued. Okay, and I mean, just it's not financially smart and it's cruel. And everybody should be ashamed of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Doug Fenton, and I know Dr. Bensavango has joined us online, so she will follow Doug.
Hi, I'm, forgive me for not having props. My name is Doug Fenton. I'm a parent of two at Riverside School and a rising member of the RTM. As other people have touched on, Dr. Jones and the district, and I've spoken to many of you, Dr. Jones and the district have provided a budget that only covers the dollars needed to continue to provide our current Greenwich Schools experience. An experience which is already seeing growing class sizes and inflation-adjusted spending per student at decade lows. To meet the BET's target, I know you all are considering program cuts. If the BOE is considering these cuts with the belief that these changes will lead to better outcomes for our children, I can respect that choice as long as it's explained to the parents in the school community why. However, if these decisions are primarily or solely being made with the aim for BET budget guideline or lower costs for lower tax sake, then I strongly urge you to reject them. I do want to specifically ask you to vote against the elimination of ALPS science. ALPS science and its predecessor, ALPS interdisciplinary sciences, has been a part of Greenwich's curriculum for decades. Many of GHS's celebrated and award-winning Regeneron scholars started their scientific journeys with ALPS science. For the scarce amount of time dedicated to science instruction in elementary, ALPS science reduces classroom sizes so that teachers can most effectively provide both ALPS and non-ALPS students more space and attention to explore, learn, and grow. I also believe that the elimination of ALPS science will harm the overall ALPS program. ALPS cost-effectively, I'm sorry, ALPS cost-effectively reduces class sizes and allows more targeted teaching for all of our third to fifth graders during essential instruction subjects. Finally, and just finally, a current GHS student who's competing for these awards for the district reached out to me and said, I believe that ALPS science truly changed the trajectory in my life. It taught me to ask questions about the world and how to improve it, and I wholeheartedly believe that removing it would prevent the next generation of young scientists from finding what makes them excited about science. I want to thank all of you for serving on the BOE, and I urge you to appropriately fund our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be Dr. Bensavango, followed by Trish McGuire.
Thank you. Can you hear me? And you can hear me? Okay, perfect. My apologies. I was at my daughter's choral concert and Carol the bells ran long. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Bensavango. I am the proud principal of Old Greenwich School, and tonight I'm speaking as the GOSECO president. David Waco and I, as GOSECO presidents, would like to take a moment to speak on behalf of the recommended budget cuts for the fiscal year 25 budget. It's important to note, GOSECO fully supports the superintendent's original proposed budget as written, with no cuts made to the budget, particularly those most closely related to students in staffing and programming. In the event these budget cuts are inevitable, we would request they are furthest from student contact time as possible. The Greenwich Public Schools are not just an academic institution. We are a district recognized on the national and international stage for our scientists, athletes, linguists, artists, musicians, and scholars. We have produced Olympic-level athletes, internationally-ranked scientists, and endless other accolades worthy of note. And as we recognize each year in our community service award ceremony, our students are champions of service and philanthropy as well. The development of their character begins at the earliest ages in preschool and kindergarten with a foundation in social-emotional learning, compassion, empathy, and inclusivity. There, our teachers plant the seeds of scholarship, artistry, athleticism, and sportsmanship. This continues throughout their time in Greenwich, ensuring we are promoting the success of children fully embodying our Greenwich Public Schools' vision of the graduate. GOSECO requests you fully support the budget as it was originally submitted and advocate for the needs of our students without any further cuts and ensuring that any cuts that need to be made are as far from student and teacher contact time as possible. Thank you. And again, my apologies for being late.
Thank you, and congratulations on receiving your doctorate. Thanks for letting us know that, too. It's great. Next up is another one of our fantastic principals, is Trish McGuire, and following her is Chloe Ravinoits, one of our students.
Thank you, and congratulations, Jen. Good evening, Dr. Jones and members of the Board of Education. Buenas noches and bonsoir. I want to start with a thank you for all you do and let you know that I have a deep understanding of the momentous job in front of you tonight. Our superintendent has put forth a budget that reflects the needs of students in the Greenwich Public Schools, and now it must be reevaluated, adjusted, and decreased with the hope to have the least possible impact on the quality of education provided to our students. It is not easy to sit in your seats. I am here to express my deep concern regarding the potential elimination of the K through two foreign language program at Julian Curtis and the impact it will have on our ability to maintain a robust magnet program. We presently boast a magnet population of 29% of our school enrollment. That is almost a third of our families who choose to come to Julian Curtis. At Julian Curtis, the foreign language program K through five is the magnet. The result of removing the program from K through two decreases the impact of the program overall. In fact, without it, we will not have a magnet program. Last year's fifth grade class had 14 students placed into advanced Spanish classes out of 24 who continued Spanish. There were also eight students who enrolled in native Spanish classes. In French, nine students continued with French, and six were placed into advanced classes. Of the fifth grade total world language student enrollment, 61% of language students went into the advanced middle school language classes. More importantly, learning a foreign language at a young age promotes empathy and a deep understanding of different cultures. In today's globalized society, these skills are more valuable than ever, and we must equip our children with the tools to navigate an international landscape successfully. Julian Curtis proudly boasts 60 countries, 30 languages, one great school. Each year, we celebrate United Nations Day, and the entire community attends to celebrate the diversity of our population. The United Nations Day Parade is a celebration of what we stand for and what we build on all year long. This is not a one-day exhibition, but a salute to the development of cultural awareness, diversity, and language skills. I urge you to reconsider this potential cut to the foreign language program. Instead, let us work together to find creative solutions, seek external funding sources, or explore partnerships with community organizations to ensure the continuity and enhancement of these essential educational opportunities. I appreciate your time and dedication to serving our community. I trust that you will carefully consider the impact of any decisions regarding foreign language education in our elementary schools and work towards finding sustainable solutions that prioritize the best interests of our students, and I wish you a joyful holiday season.
Thanks. We wish you one as well. Next up is Chloe Ravinoits, followed by Morgan Mitchell.
Hi, Board. I'm Chloe Ravinoits, the vice president of the junior class, and I'm going to just continue what Caleb was saying about the midterms and finals. We believe that going back to the original weighting of the midterms and finals is extremely detrimental to students' mental health and well-being. The juniors specifically are very stressed about this, as this year matters the most for all of us, and we are returning back to such a heavy weighting, which doesn't necessarily seem fair. Since freshman and sophomore year, we had the COVID weighting, which was 10%. With the stress of this, as well as starting to pick colleges, it has made school a rather unpleasant place to be because of the insane amount of pressure that is being put on us. These are just some quotes from students at the current midterm weighting, which is 20%, specifically the junior class. It is super stressful to have to take a test on the full first semester while having it count towards so much, especially when this year is all about focusing on college. This one test shouldn't determine whether colleges would accept me or not. I just don't understand why one test has to have such a big impact on my grade. I've had an A both quarters, but this one test can mess everything up because of how much it's weighted. It is extremely stressful working a full semester to maintain good grades, and the fact that there's a chance that your entire GPA gets dropped dramatically at the end of the semester because of a single test doesn't seem fair. I feel like my mental health suffers more than it should because of how stressful this test is. I suffer from super bad anxiety, and knowing that these tests are weighted so heavily has me already feeling so anxious about taking them. And lastly, I'll do so good during the first semester, but I test this big is just so hard, not because I don't know the material, but because half a year of work hitting me at once. As you can see, the midterm and midterm weighting and final is already impacting students before we've even taken it. So I hope you can acknowledge this and take this in consideration and help us. Thank you.
Thanks, Chloe. Next up is Morgan Mitchell, to be followed by the Greenwich High School baseball team or representative thereof.
Thank you all for allowing me to come. Something I've thought about for a long time. Yes, I love Greenwich. I'm Morgan Mitchell. My wife, Betsy, and I have been in this town for 40 years. We've had three children go through the school system. We have one daughter who's actually a principal of a Brooklyn public high school. Try that one on for size. And I'm a retired real estate broker, so I'm not a blank slate when it comes to Greenwich education. To start with, I'm astounded that we even think of cutting because if you look at the last five years, the amount of young couples that have come to Greenwich is just amazing. In fact, there are more strollers walking up and down the Greenwich streets. And those, that's our future, and here we're cutting. There's really a mistake in that. And I think that brings to the major problem we have. In the hierarchy in Greenwich, we don't really have an advocate for education. There just isn't one, and I think that needs to be changed. Because, I mean, to, for the BET to do a whole budget and not have an educational advocate there when that's 55% of the total Greenwich market business. I mean, that's just, that seems to me a real mistake and an opportunity lost because by the time the budget gets down to wherever it comes down to, if you, they've taken it knife and death. Now, what came to my mind when I was writing this as I saw this big fat guy, that was the picture, I had this big fat guy, and everybody was picking on him. Well, it's like our budget, you know? We have 60, we have 55% of the budget, and no one's there, and everybody's picking on them. They could take a little bit here, a little bit there, because there's so much, no one will notice it. You know, what's a million dollars out of, you know, whatever, 22 million or whatever it'd be? And so they, so they pick away, just like they would on a kid and taking advantage of them. That was the first thing I noticed. Then I tried to figure out what would be the answer. Well, the answer would be you take something, somebody like the head of PTA or the person you heard earlier, Doug Fenton, who loves the school system, and create maybe a non-voting person that goes to all the BET meetings. Something that keeps the education in the forefront of what we're at. I think it would be a tremendous help because we're really lacking that. We're losing, we have no power in the hierarchy.
Thirty seconds.
I think the other thing I also found is there there are 4,000 kids in Greenwich. If the, if the parents pay $50,000 a year to go to a private school, 4,000, that is a lot of kids. And you know what the savings is to that? Each kid costs about $25,000 in Greenwich schools. Well, if you take that 25,000 and the 4,000, there's $100 million that could go into benefit Greenwich because it's being saved by us.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up is our Greenwich High School baseball team, to be followed by Caitlin Wardell.
Good evening, Dr. Jones and Board members. My name is Cody Baker, and I'm a senior and one of the captains of the Greenwich High School baseball team. The other captains and I have been members of the varsity team for the past three years, and I've been offered an opportunity to continue to play baseball at Emerson College next year. I, like most of the players on our team, have been playing baseball since five years old. It's what we love to do. I'm here tonight on behalf of our GHS baseball team to share some of the thoughts and questions that have arisen since the recent news that our home field will be unplayable. We are grateful for the communication and updates on field status from Dr. Jones and Mr. George Yu over the past two weeks. Their communication about the efforts to execute a plan to play at an alternative field has been very helpful in understanding and managing expectations for the 2024 baseball season. Our purpose here tonight is to have a voice in the decision-making process and share some of our beliefs about what is essential to create an experience that would be comparable to the one we would have had at our home field. Mr. George Yu sent an email out today explaining that the lower Havemeyer Field would be used as an alternative field, noting some of the items that he plans to provide for said field, including pitching mounds, dugouts, and batting cages. That sounds like a great start. However, there are additional things that are necessary to have for both performance and safety reasons. The upgrades and additional equipment that we are asking for will not only benefit us this year, but also be of great value in the future when the field here at Central is no longer usable. First and foremost, we need a temporary fence in the outfield that could go up in March and come down in June. In addition to the excitement and emotion that comes with hitting a homerun, a fence is essential as a line of demarcation. A line of demarcation is also important, as many of the juniors in the program are looking to get recruited, which stats play a pivotal role in. College coaches will likely ask how many home runs they hit or how many balls they hit to the fence. Umpires will not be able to see where a ball lands or rolls to from the infield. The fence will also be there to address certain safety concerns, as there is nothing separating the outfield grass from the gravel tracks surrounding it. Any player running to catch a ball in the outfield faces a potential injury risk due to this sudden and unexpected change. Secondly, we need a shed to house items such as a tarp, rakes, a pitching machine, bases, and baseballs. It would be impractical to bring these items to and from school every day before and after every single practice or game. Lastly, we are asking for adequate seating and parking for our fans. As much as this season means to us, it means equally as much to our parents and fans who make an effort to support us at any chance they get. Although it seems relatively miniscule, the support of others goes a very long way in contributing to the morale and confidence of a team. These are all requests that would be a given if we were playing our season at GHS. With that being said, I want to emphasize that the players and parents in the program are deeply invested in helping as much as we can in any way that we can. We began fundraising in the fall and plan on continuing that up to and through the start of our season. We hope to be kept in the loop on any decisions made in the future as well. Again, I would like to thank Dr. Jones, Mr. George Yu, and all members of the board for your continued support throughout this process and for listening to me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We always love to have students come and speak. Next up is Caitlin Wardell, followed by Janet McMahon.
Good evening. I'm Caitlin Wardell. I have two children in third and fifth grade at Riverside School. I'm standing up tonight as a concerned parent about the draconian cuts proposed to the school budget. According to an article in the UCLA Health website, physical activity has been shown to improve students' academic performance, social-emotional learning, and mental health. Why reduce gym class time and create more hyperactivity, hyperactive children in a crowded classroom? That classroom is getting more crowded due to the potential ALPS science cut, which, like all ALPS classes, takes ALPS kids out of the class so the general education teacher can give more attention to the rest of the class. Crowded classrooms deter learning and let children fall through the cracks. When that happens, a few years later, the district has to pay far more money than gym class and When that happens, a few years later, the district has to pay far more money than gym class and ALP science fees in academic remediation. Or hasn't the town already learned that with its past, uh, special education mistakes? Early intervention for academics and behavioral issues is always cheaper and easier than waiting. And if the argument for cutting ALP science in elementary schools is that 70% of middle school students are in advanced science. I say either raise your admitted standards at the middle school level or increase ALP science at the elementary. People buy houses in Greenwich and send their kids to GPS because they believe in the district's high standards. Don't prove us wrong here tonight. Sorry. Lastly, cutting services to elementary schools does not sell houses. It does not increase your tax base. It signals a town in financial distress. Buyers will look to wealthier towns with richer and more robust academic offerings like Darien, New Canaan, and Westport. A town that can afford to invest in its children is a town with its financial house in order. Greenwich can't afford to lose out to its neighboring towns. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up Janet McMahon, to be followed by Betsy McIntyre.
Good evening, and thank you, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Jones and guests. My name is Janet McMahon, and tonight I'm speaking as a concerned parent of two public Greenwich Public School children. I've lost count on how many Board of Ed budget meetings I've spoken at, but suffice it to say that there have been many. And my message is almost identical at all of them. It goes something like this. The superintendent submits a budget and then the BET imposes a completely unrealistic budget guideline. Then the board starts thinking of ways to cut the budget and teachers and parents like myself and everyone here before me say, wait, hold on, please don't cut the budget. Alas, I'm back again tonight to say, please don't cut the budget. Especially since some of the budget cutting measures that have been discussed include, but are not limited to, increasing class sizes, reducing or eliminating intramural sports. Reducing funds for foreign language, art, music, et cetera, and reducing or eliminating ALP science altogether. Please do not cave to the BET's unreasonable budget guideline of 4.3% that is simply out of touch with the reality of the economy today. Please also do not vote for any of the aforementioned cuts, which will negatively impact the delivery of Greenwich's premier education. For those of you who are not aware, Greenwich Public Schools is currently ranked number five in Nisha's Best Public School Districts in Connecticut, just behind Westport, New Canaan, Wilton, and Darien. Greenwich High School is ranked ninth out of 206 high schools, according to US News and World Reports. Greenwich Public Schools is academically strong and competitive, and students, parents, and teachers all want to keep it that way. It's one of the top reasons young families move to Greenwich, and is the main reason my husband and I chose to move to Greenwich almost 16 years ago. Please approve the superintendent's operating budget as submitted. The spend represents a carefully developed budget that is overwhelmingly all fixed overwhelmingly or all, sorry, overwhelmingly fixed costs and/or mandated or contracted. The budget is high, but accurately reflects the inflationary economy of today. Salaries increase, the inflationary economy of today with increased salaries. Fixed costs, transportation, and utilities all increasing in the face of increased enrollment, higher special education tuition, new state mandates, the expiration of COVID era grants, and et cetera. Most important, this budget represents the amount our students need to succeed and thrive academically, physically, and emotionally. Please do not shortchange the students of GPS in order to fit the arbitrary and unrealistic budget guidelines of the BET. On the other hand, cuts to the operating budget will adversely affect academic outcomes and will negatively impact property values. As we all know, strong public schools equal strong property values. Please keep our property values strong and vote yes to the operating budget as written. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Betsy McIntyre, to be followed by Julie Fariniers.
Good evening. As co-president of the PTA at Riverside School, a GPS parent, and a concerned citizen. I'm deeply invested in our town and our children's education. My family chose to move to Greenwich because of the caliber of its public schools. And the past six years as a GP, in the, as part of the GPS system, it's been phenomenal for my children. However, this year, as our town's inflation-adjusted spend per student continues to decline. This year, the public school experience has felt different. The class sizes have ballooned. There are 26 students in my daughter's fourth grade classroom. And we know this is a trend across the district, with classroom sizes up 6% in K through five in just two years. Teacher morale is at dishearteningly low levels as they feel the impact of schools being under-resourced and unsupported. As parents, like you heard from Pilar earlier tonight, it feels like we're fighting for reasonable resources at every turn. Parents showed up here tonight. They wrote letters to all of you and are tuning in from their homes. United with a common concern. If Dr. Jones's essential needs-driven budget is rejected, we will enter another year of inadequate funding for our schools. Our children's education will suffer with oversized classes becoming the new norm. And beloved programs that are doing so well for our children, such as PE and ALP. And who knows what's next, being reduced to mere line item cuts in an inadequate school budget. Moreover, we're concerned about our teachers. There's a real threat of losing our most talented educators to neighboring towns like Darien. Which has committed to budget increases in line with or even greater than Tony Jones's request. And we fear the further erosion of teacher morale as this spend per student continues to decline. And unreasonable demands are asked of our educators and school staff. I urge the Board of Education to adopt Dr. Jones's original budget. This is more than a financial decision. It reflects our community's commitment to our children's future. Let's prioritize their education. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up Julie Fariniers, to be followed by Peter Share.
Good evening, Chair Protem Hirsch, Dr. Jones, members of the Board of Education Cabinet, PTA, and Community. My name is Julie Fariniers, and I am the Executive Director of the Greenwich Alliance for Education. We are the only education foundation in Greenwich and are 100% focused on our public school students, teachers, families, and alumni. Tonight, it is important for all members of the BOE elected as stewards of the schools to support the superintendent's operating budget, thoughtfully reflecting the needs of the district. Blaise and Patrick's work on the budget demonstrates there is limited discretionary spending and that there are not many levers that can be moved without significant changes to educational programs and policy. The Greenwich Alliance vision statement. In partner with the Greenwich Public Schools, the Alliance drives innovation, opportunity, and access in learning to empower all students to achieve academic, personal, and professional success. We often say we are the R and D arm of the public schools, giving educators a chance to try new ideas to address the opportunity gap and change up the educational experience for students. We are not here to close budget gaps because the town is unwilling to properly fund the schools. Significant grant dollars were spent last year for assured, assured science experiences for all first and second grade students in, at the Bruce Museum in Greenwich Audubon. It is important for students to have equitable access to hands-on learning experiences related to the curriculum to create the context for understanding. While we were pleased that we could fund this grant proposal, it clearly demonstrates the Alliance filling in the gap. Onto other Alliance news. Congratulations to Parkway and North Myanos for winning top prizes for Turkey Trot participation. And to North Street, Julian Curtis, and Cosco for being so close. We raised over $80,000, beating our budget for our programs. Thanks to everyone who sponsored, including GEA and Gosa, who registered, volunteered, and donated to the race. A little avid news. We just returned from presenting at the Avid National Conference about our Avid Success Programming. Avid is the, is best-in-class teaching, and we continue to advocate to expand it here at the elementary level. It meets three of the GPS strategic goals: increased family and community engagement, increased student sense of belonging, increased positive working environment for teachers and staff. Reaching out grants. Application will be available on the website next week. Application should foster educational success for under-resourced students and innovative enrichment opportunities to elevate achievement for all students. I'm available to speak to anyone interested who wants to vet an idea. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and enjoy the holiday season.
Thank you, Julie. Next up is Peter Share, followed by Rebecca Cooper.
Ready? Come your way. My kids got an amazing education in Greenwich schools, truly first rate. They attend and have attended the finest, most selective universities in the country. And I attribute that to the incredible teachers that they had in Greenwich Public Schools. Sadly, the school system that educated my kids isn't the one educating Greenwich kids today. It's slowly being dumbed down. Parents need to get informed and stand up. I want to give you five numbers to consider. 300, 19.6, 3, 567, and 33. 10 years ago, 300, Greenwich schools had 300 more students than they do today. 19.6, the average elementary class size 10 years ago, the same today. 3, there were three out programs, English, math, and science. All in, in all elementary schools, fully staffed, fully with the amount of classroom time. 567, it's the mean SAT score in 2015. Guess what? It's the mean SAT score now. 33, the educational program that I described to you in 2014 was delivered with 33 less teachers than Dr. Jones has proposed in this budget. 300, 19.7, 3, 33, 567. How did the 2014 team deliver all of this with 33 less certified teachers and 300 more kids? Anticipating the smoke machine that will start after I just put these numbers out. Uh, I just want to make a couple of points. 2014, 33% minority, exact same percentage now. 55.5% English language learners, exact percentage right now. Teacher pay then, highest in Connecticut. Teacher pay today, still the highest in Connecticut, and you should continue that as a board. Sadly, with all of this extra teachers that have been put in the system, overall academic achievement is the exact same number that it was 10 years ago. The only thing that's different is the central office is different, leadership team is different, and the board is different. I'll let you try to figure that one out. People, parents should be upset. I know I am as a taxpayer. We're all being duped in this, uh, as pawns in a silly political game. Greenwich teachers and school staff have always been amazing, and they are amazing now. But if you're a parent, you should pull out your pitchforks, metaphorically speaking. And demand from the superintendent and the board that your school system in Greenwich enjoyed what was done a decade ago and the school's fabulous school system that my kids enjoy. Your kids who are in there now deserve better.
Thank you, Mr. Share. Uh, next up is Rebecca Cooper, followed by David Levine.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Cooper, and I am the proud PTA president of Julian Curtis. We implore you to retain the K through two language program at Julian Curtis. Why? We, Julian Curtis, are the magnet school of world language for the Greenwich Public Schools. As defined in the bylaws of the Greenwich Public Schools Procedure E 015.15. A magnet school may choose a theme or specialty as a means of enhancing student achievement and of attracting other students to attend. World language has answered the call for Julian Curtis. While this may seem like a small cut to you in the multiple line item agendas in your budget, it will undoubtedly provide a ripple effect which will harm our core values spoken about earlier by Principal McGuire. And of enhancing student achievement and attracting others from coming to Julian Curtis. Do not deny this right to our youngest learners. We live in one of the wealthiest school districts in the country. To cut at the core value of our school, language is to tell these children that they cannot begin to love a second language until they are halfway through their elementary careers, and that is unacceptable. We can do better, and we must do better. And I concede the rest of my time to Samantha Saltiel.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Maltin Saltiel. I'm on the schedule for quite later. I'm here to advocate for the continuation of funding for the K through two foreign language program at Julian Curtis. I'm speaking this evening from both a personal and a professional perspective. Personally, as one of the magnet families that Principal McGuire referenced earlier. The mother of a first and second grader at Julian Curtis who both participate in the French language program. Professionally, as a CMO of Sesame Workshop, the global impact educational organization behind Sesame Street, the largest informal educator in the world. First, as parents, my husband and I, both fluent French speakers, we chose Julian Curtis as a magnet school specifically for the language program. We deeply appreciate the global culture that Principal McGuire and the JC staff have built within the school, which represents over 60 countries from around the world. Our children love the French program and their first and second grade teachers have shared how much they're thriving. In my time at Sesame Workshop, our research and third-party brain science research proves how critical it is to reach children in these early years when their brain is developing. Language learning during these formative years can help build a healthy sense of self-identity and understanding and appreciation of others. A sense of belonging, something I'm sure that we can all agree is becoming increasingly more important in our world today. On behalf of all of our parents, particularly magnet families who benefit from this incredible language program and choose it specifically. We implore you to continue funding for the K through two program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is David Levine, to be followed by Elspeth Sfranzie. I hope I got that for, uh, correct.
Good evening, everyone. Um, Dr. Jones, Board of Ed, Community. Uh, my name is David Levine. I am on the Executive Committee of the JCPTA. I am the Vice Chairman of the Building Committee for Julian Curtis. Recently elected to District One in the RTM where Julian Curtis is located. But most importantly, I'm the father of a fourth grader and a kindergartner at JC. I also love Verde, which is our school color, as my kindergartner now knows how to say. Julian Curtis is the school of world languages. And as you guys know, it's the core mission of the magnet school. And I was pretty shocked to see that you guys were considering cutting this core part of the curriculum. To me, I, I know budget decisions are hard, but the way I like to think about it is cost and benefit. The cost side of this is actually really simple. The cost of this program is nine hours, half of one teacher, $30,000 in the context of $190 million budget. It rounds basically to zero. So the cost is zero, but the benefits are huge. Spanish and French reflect the kind of diversity and inclusion that we want to see in our schools. It reflects the 60 countries that are represented in our schools. It also is the reflection of the kinds of values of acceptance that we want our kids to learn at a young age. And also, research shows that early exposure to foreign language is good for cognitive development. Performance has been good in tests, as Trish has mentioned. But lastly, most importantly, I think, is that school choice, allowing parents to decide the kind of education they want. It's a gift that we're giving to our families here in this district with magnet schools. We have families in our neighborhood who choose public schools rather than private schools. They choose it for this reason. And we've made a commitment to those parents, the 29% of the parents that are in the school for that reason, and probably more, who are choosing public schools rather than private. And I don't think we can take away that choice lightly. That's why I think we should look at the, the minimalist cost versus the very, very strong benefits. I know you guys won't make this decision lightly, so I really appreciate you, um, not cutting this program. And, uh, thank you very much, um, for your service. I need to, uh, now get home to my kindergartner. He likes to count to CN every night, and so I'll, uh, go let him do that. Thank, thank you all. Take care.
Thank you. Next up is Elspeth Sfranzie, and to be followed by Rachel Griak. Thank you. Next up is Elspeth Spransey, and to be followed by Rachel Griaque. Is Elspeth here or online?
I'm not seeing a name like that in the attendees list.
If you are online, can you just press a raise hand so we can see you? Okay, I assume she's not online, so we will move to our next speaker, Rachel Griaque, to be followed by Sarah Hacker.
Good evening, Dr. Jones and members of the board. My name is Rachel Griaque, and I am one of the FLESS teachers at Julian Curtis in North Street Schools. I've been teaching both Spanish and English to students in grades pre-K to sixth for over twenty years. Tonight, I would like to share three of the many research-based advantages for sustaining the K two FLESS program at Julian Curtis in Hamilton Avenue Schools. The first reason is academic. Language researchers over the past sixty years have found that learning a second language from an early age boosts cognitive ability and critical thinking skills. I observed these benefits firsthand, starting in kindergarten. Students noticed differences in written and spoken text. For example, they asked, "Why? Why does the J make the H sound in Spanish and not in English?" These connections in both languages strengthen and deepen literacy understanding. In the upper grades, students inquire when phrases are not direct translations and sentence structures differ. These improvements have demonstrated quantitatively the strong correlation between foreign language learning and higher standardized test scores. Studies in psychology has also found that bilingualism increased memory, problem-solving, and concentration skills. The second reason is for the social and emotional learning and well-being of our students. Social emotional learning, or SEL, helps students to develop empathy for others and build relationship skills, belonging, and community. Recently, at the ACTFO Conference in Chicago, I saw a presentation by the World Language Chairs from Wesley, Massachusetts. They explained how a K twelve world language program not only met SEL goals but led to higher academic success and the seal of biliteracy for their students. In Greenwich magnet schools, this is evident when you walk into a FLESS classroom. You notice a sense of belonging and community. You hear students in Spanish and French joyfully sharing about themselves and their feelings. You hear third graders reading books they wrote in Spanish and French, taking pride in who they are and their heritage. This level of proficiency that also builds community in grades three through five is not possible without a K two foundational program. Thirdly, numerous studies have shown that children at younger ages have a greater ability to imitate pronunciation and acquire language. Their effective filter is low, enabling them to take risks in a second language. The benefit to starting young is evident daily as I teach in both a three, five FLESS school and a K five FLESS school. Although I teach the same content to fifth graders in both schools, the activities and conversations that the J C students do independently evinces their advanced proficiency level and competence covering another language. I'm going to skip to the end. Finally, Julian Curtis is a unique place where families from all socioeconomic and cultural backgrounds come for the world language magnet inability to choose French or Spanish, starting in kindergarten. More and more Greenwich families are choosing private schools that boast having signature programs and experiences. Greenwich Country Day School, Brunswick School, and Greenwich Academy all include FLESS programs starting in pre-K and K because they see it as a worthy investment. If we cut our signature programs from our school, we risk losing more families.
You can send us the rest of your comments as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sarah Hacker, to be followed by David Lancaster. Is Sarah here? Or online? I don't. Don't see her online. Nope. Okay. Next up is David Lancaster, to be followed by Andrew Sotzing.
Evening, everyone. My name is Dave Lancaster. I'm a fourth-generation native of Greenwich. My house is next door to North Myena School, where my mother attended, as did I and the rest of my family. We're all products of Greenwich Public Schools. Although I have no longer have school-aged children, I'm a strong supporter of the schools. I recently was asked by some North Myena's families about the school budget. I work in finance, so I decided to check out the facts about school funding. This is what I found out from audited published data from town, state, and the federal government. Number one, our town spends the most per student of any district and over two, with over two thousand students in Connecticut. By a lot, twenty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars per child. That's seven percent higher than Westport, eleven percent more than Darien, eighteen percent more than New Canaan, and nineteen percent more than Fairfield. Our teachers earn the most in Connecticut. Their top pay level is much higher than other comparable school districts. In fact, over the typical tenure of a teacher, they're paid three hundred and fifty-six thousand more than a teacher working in the next highest Fairfield County District. In the last reported data, Greenwich spends forty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars per student on special education. It's fifteen percent more than special education students in the next highest Fairfield County District. Fifteen percent more than Darien, seventeen percent more than Fairfield, and eighteen percent more than Westport. I have worked in finance all my professional life and currently work for the London Stock Exchange. I know numbers and budgets. If these were the facts in the real world, with twenty percent of our children not at a great reading grade level, which is the case, you would conclude only one thing. We don't have a money problem. We have a management problem. Board of Education, you are on firm ground to send this budget back to your administrators for reevaluation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Andrew Sotzing, to be followed by Sandra Grandinetti.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Sotzing. My wife and I are both graduates of Greenwich Public Schools. My five-year-old son recently started kindergarten at Julian Curtis, and we chose Julian Curtis specifically for its early second language curriculum and its cultural diversity. My mother has been an ESL teacher in Stanford for the past twenty-two years and witnesses day in and day out the cognitive benefits that come with introducing a second language to children early in their learning career. Just today, on our walk home from school, I asked my son, "Did you have a good day at school?" And he responded, "Mmm, maso menos." My daughter is starting kindergarten at Julian Curtis in a year and a half, and we very much hope she'll have access to the same curriculum. In summary, we feel that the thirty grand annually that goes to support the K through two foreign language program is a tiny drop in the bucket, and we hope you'll reconsider cutting this important program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Sandra Grandinetti, to follow, to be followed by Bjorn Pansky.
Good evening, Dr. Jones and members of the board. I am Sandra Grandinetti, a resident of Cosco, the parent of three adult children who are educated in Greenwich Public Schools and a proud teacher at Julian Curtis School, the little United Nations School of Greenwich. I am speaking tonight to advocate on behalf of the World Language Program at Julian Curtis. We are the Magnet School of World Languages, offering students the choice of either Spanish or French instruction from kindergarten through fifth grade. There is ample research that demonstrates the cognitive benefits of learning a second language from an early age, such as increased executive functioning skills, improved problem-solving abilities, and enhanced link-ling skills and memory. More importantly, foreign language instruction positively contributes to the cultural diversity of our school and fosters acceptance amongst our student population. I have seen firsthand how empowered our ESL students feel when their native language is spoken and taught in every grade level. In our global community, cultural diversity and acceptance is necessary in order to live peacefully and harmoniously. Our magnet program was created in part to address racial imbalance in our elementary schools. Removing FLESS in K two would likely decrease our magnet enrollment and further contribute to overall declining enrollment. I understand the budget is complex and decisions are not made lightly. However, please reconsider this decision that is not in the best interest of our school community. Please support the superintendent's budget as originally submitted. I appreciate all of your efforts and thank you for your consideration. Now, I would like to read a letter, the speech my colleague Samantha Schuster was here to give but had to go home with her two young children. My name is Samantha Schuster, and I'm a second-grade teacher at Julian Curtis School. We have been made aware that due to budget cuts, there are plans to eliminate foreign language for our K two students at our and other schools in the district. I've been fortunate enough to teach both first and second grade at Julian Curtis to those closely for the past twelve years. When I began, I was immediately struck by the wonderful diversity of our student body. In fact, this diversity I quickly learned was the cornerstone of the school culture openly celebrated in our very own United Nations Day Parade. I will mirror what many others in support of continuing our language program for the K two population will share, that there is no shortage of data and research suggesting the importance and lifelong benefits of learning a second language in the early elementary years. These benefits include, but are not limited to, improvements in executive attention, ability to attend to important details, interpersonal communication skills, as well as stronger memory abilities.
Thirty seconds.
These are just a few benefits that strengthen our students' ability to effectively function in and out of school. There is also concern regarding our magnet school status as this program supports our mission of exposing our students to world language beginning in kindergarten. What would this cut mean for our students, families, and future of our lovely school community? Thank you for your consideration of this matter, Samantha Schuster. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Bjorn Pansky, and we may have time for one more speaker after that, who would be Jenny Jones.
Good evening, morning. Thank you for the time. I'm Bjorn Pineker, and I am the parent of one of the students at Julian Curtis. And it was with great disdain that I read the email that informed us that the foreign language program will be, could potentially be cut from the budget, could potentially be cut from the school. Having grown up myself in a multilingual country, multilingual school, and moving to the USA fairly recently, I know the benefits of language acquisition and language retention at an early age. I'm a language professional. Linguistics being my specific area of expertise. And for any learning environment, multilingualism is not only language-based but learning-based. Any multilingual speaker develops the skills to learn efficiently, effectively, and more efficiently. And cutting anything that would relate to multilingual development for kids, especially at this grade-level ages, would have such great impacts that it is really a disservice to the children. It's a disservice to the community, and it's a disservice to our grade-school system, which you so wonderfully have developed and supported in this extremely privileged and fortunate community that we live in. And I think we should remember why we do what we do, who we do it for, and what the advantages are. And I believe language cuts for students at this level would be detrimental, and it's something that we can absolutely not do. So please keep it in the budget. We have written a budget for a reason. Let's stick to that budget. Let's keep, let's give our kids a foundation and the strength that they deserve to build a future that they can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be our last speaker prior to having to go to our business portion of our meeting. Is Jenny Jones here? No, Jenny Jones is not here. Is she online? I don't see her online either. Okay, we can move to the next speaker then. That's Sue Wilmot, and that will be our last speaker before we have to move on to our business meeting. There are eight or nine left. I have to go check, which would be another half an hour.
Hi, I'll keep this quite short. As you can hear, I'm not a Native American. I'm English. We have three children. My husband and I have three children in the Greenwich Public School system. And over the past twelve years, we've experienced both public and private, both in Europe, in the U K, and in Greenwich in the area. And I have to say, I've been blown away by the experience of the teachers in the Greenwich Public School system, their dedication, their passion for learning, and generally just how they bring the kids up to a point where they really want to learn. It's been quite inspirational as a parent to watch that, and it's quite sad then to see that that's put at risk with the budget cuts that have been proposed. I think the two areas that raise alarm for my husband and myself are in the areas of the ALP Science Program and also in physical education. So for ALP Science, I'm personally a little bit concerned because everything we seem to be hearing is focused on STEM and the importance of STEM in our children. We hear about it. My husband hears about it at the Mobile World Conference. It's one of the keynote speakers who came and actually gave a talk. And this is a conference that's attended by Facebook, by Google, by all the social media platforms and technology platforms out there. It's also spoken about conferences such as Davos, which is the Political and Economic World Forum, the importance of STEM. So it feels a shame that we're putting that at risk in our Greenwich Public Schools when it's such, recognized as being such an important subject. The other area that for concern is around physical education, and that's purely, for me, it's more around the mental health of our children. Again, this is an area that we know is a big concern, depression, anxiety, learning disabilities, all growing across children. And the one thing that we know from all the speakers that we hear that are given across different schools is that physical education can make a difference. We don't need medication necessarily, but physical education can make a difference for all of those children. And I think there are two areas that if we can protect those in the budget cuts that are being proposed, would have a massive impact on the future of our children, on the reputation of the Greenwich Public School systems, and the ability for Greenwich to still be very reputable when our children apply to college and beyond. Thank you for listening. Good night.
Thank you. Cody, the answer to that is, I think there's seven. So that's just under thirty minutes, but it's still in a twenty-some odd. I mean, if it's the, if the board's will to allow the rest of the speakers, that's fine. I'm fine with that.
So I'll make a motion to allow the remaining speakers to go now before we start our business meeting.
Well, I always said we just have a sense of the board's fine too. Everybody's fine, okay? Yeah, I know. Okay, so the next up would be Melinda O'Laughlin, to be followed by Sean Mayer.
Hello? Oh, cool. My name is Melinda O'Laughlin. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, even though it's past the time. I'm a proud mom of a sixth grader at EMS, a fourth and second grader at Riverside, and have a four-year-old about to enter K. I just wanted to quickly mention some numbers since our friend up there liked a lot of numbers. Eight thousand, six hundred and five, that's how many students are in the GPS systems, according to NISH. Westport Schools have five thousand, three hundred and three, and Darien School District is four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four. He talked about how the budget was greater than other districts by fifteen percent or a little bit more in Darien and Westport. But given Greenwich Public Schools' number of students is almost double that of the Darien District Schools, how is it that our numbers are not double that of the budget? How come it's not double the budget of the Dariens? So please consider keeping Tony Jones's budget as previously proposed. I'm here to voice that. I have a second grader who's in a class of twenty-four students. He's relegated to his desk when it's rug time because there aren't enough seats or space on the rug. I have a fourth grader who's in a class of twenty-six students, and I went in there and PT. and I went in there and PT, other parent teacher conference, and I couldn't imagine, I couldn't imagine how many students are like crammed into that one room. It looked like a hodgepodge of, I don't know what was going on there. Please don't make any cuts. Secondly, I stand in support of the ALP program as a whole and specifically the ALP Science Program, which has been flagged to be cut. My sixth grader was, and my fourth graders are in the science, math, and ELA ALP programs. Finding the right school for our children has been a challenge. I had a vice principal in a popular New York City Public School laugh in my face when I shared with her my daughter's reading levels that had been assessed independently, saying, I find that very hard to believe. There was no ALP equivalent at that school, and looking back, I felt that the huge class sizes of 28 students left no room for
Thirty seconds.
the best and brightest to be nurtured. Please don't let that happen at our schools. Our teachers deserve better. Our students deserve better. Please keep the originally proposed budget that Tony Jones had proposed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up is Sean Mayer to be followed by Jennifer Marie Taylor. Is Sean here? I don't see him online. Okay, so next up is Jennifer Marie Taylor. I just want to see if she's here. Okay. That's who's walking up. And then following Jennifer Marie is Kim Nielsen.
Can you hear me? Okay. Well, first of all, thank you so much for taking the time to let us stay here and talk today. So my daughter didn't make me wait an hour later. She's very excited to be here and share with you guys why we believe that we need to keep the foreign language at Julian Curtis for kindergarten through second grade. We currently have two children at JC in first and fifth grade with our youngest entering kindergarten in 2024. Research has shown that learning another language improves students' reading, writing, and math skills, and that there is a strong correlation between foreign language study and higher standardized test skills, scores. Learning languages at an early age also enhances core cognitive skills, including reasoning, problem solving, and memory, along with improving communication and intercultural skills. Early Spanish instruction also enabled one of my children to communicate with another JC family whose first language is not English, another demonstration of how linguistics promotes inclusion. JC is the flagship school for cultural diversity and GPS, and frankly, defunding early education, early language education devalues the powerful mission of diversity, equity, and inclusion we aspire to. I implore you to assess closely the detrimental effects that are sure to result from such a myopic approach focused on dollars and cents. Budget cuts like this harm our children and the GPS's legacy as a leader in education. Thank you. And now I'm going to have my daughter Hannah say a couple of words. She's at JC currently as a fifth grader.
Hola. Wait, is it on?
Yes.
Hola, me llamo Hannah Taylor. Soy una estudiante de Julian Curtis. I am currently in fifth grade. I love my school and the diversity that it brings to our community, and I love learning Spanish. My Aunt Roseanne used to teach Spanish, and my dad uses Spanish to communicate with some of his patients, which he learned as a GPS student a long time ago. So I understand the value of language education. Language is a very important life skill that our school, Julian Curtis, provides us with. Since I have exposure to different languages like French and Spanish, I have an easier time with English because it is a mixture of lots of different languages. This is why I find it so crucial to keep teaching K through second students a new language. As we say at JC, sixty countries, thirty languages, and one big community. Let's continue to show the world that we value diversity. Gracias.
Thank you so much for getting up and speaking to us, Hannah. Next up is Kim Nielsen to be followed by Angie Hardifillis.
Hi, can you hear me all right? This is Kim Nielsen.
Perfect. Yep.
Great. Thank you so much for your time and for extending our ability to speak to you tonight. I'm here, Kim Nielsen, as a Greenwich mother of two and former Greenwich High School graduate to urge and even demand that the Board of Education moves forward with a budget that meets Superintendent Tony Jones's proposal for 6% increase and not the lower recently announced BET budget guideline, which creates a $3 million budget gap. Failing to meet our superintendent's proposal, as many have mentioned here, could mean severe cuts in ALPS, ALP Science, ALPS headcount, and significantly cutting weekly PE time that is essential for so many students. Against an overall town budget of roughly half a billion dollars, it makes no sense to nickel and dime the children of this town and our valued teachers. To the contrary, we actually need to invest in our town's education simply to accommodate the cost of increased enrollment, higher utility costs, increased state mandated special education needs, and also to provide those competitive teacher salaries in the face of significant cost of living increases. As a product of actually Central Middle School and the Greenwich Public School System, and being a first-generation college graduate, I urge you to consider our students first, especially since cuts tend to disproportionately hurt students from underserved backgrounds. As John Dewey, the American philosopher and psychologist famously said, "Education is not preparation for life. Education is life itself." Let's invest in Greenwich Public Schools and therefore our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up is Angie Hardifillis to be followed by our final speaker, Jackie Homann.
Good evening, Dr. Jones and Board of Ed members. Thank you so much for the extended time. I know tonight is hugely important to the budget conversation, and I don't mean to undermine its significance, but I need to speak on behalf of baseball as it is time-sensitive if we're to get things together before the start of the spring season. My name is Angie Hardifillis, and tonight I'm speaking as a parent of three baseball players, as well as a volunteer baseball coach in our community. Captain Baker, along with the Greenwich High School baseball players you heard earlier, did a great job articulating specific needs the baseball community is advocating for at Haven Meyer Field. As they stated, Dr. Jones, we are so grateful for your communication already regarding the baseball field situation, and we hope that you'll be able to work with Parks and Rec to help get the necessary items for our baseball players at the Haven Meyer Field. Two factors that could provide additional incentive is that all the efforts that are made for this spring will definitely extend into the future. As everyone here is well aware, we have some big projects coming up in the town that will actually both impact two of the 60-90 field, baseball fields in town, being Central Middle School project as well as the Dorothy Hamilton Skating Rank project, which would affect Strazza Field. The Haven Meyer Field is also used by the entire town's baseball community through the travel summer and fall programs such as Greenwich Cannons and the Greenwich Babe Ruth. And I brought somebody else with me tonight. You got it?
Yeah. Hi, my name is Mikey Hardifillis, and my older brothers that go to Greenwich High School could not be here tonight. I just wanted to say that right now I'm in my 12U baseball season, and once I turn 13, I'll also be playing on the big field. Players from the age of 13 use the 60-90 field, so I know all the help and effort made this spring will be super appreciated, not only by this year's high school team, but all of us in baseball. Also, I hope you can get the budget passed how you wrote it, so we do not need to sacrifice our educational experience. Wishing you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming and sharing your thoughts with us, Mikey. And our final speaker for the night is Ms. Jackie Homann.
Good evening, Board of Education members, new members, and Dr. Jones. I'm not sure if you are aware of this, but this past weekend, an organization called People's World held an annual Amistad Awards in New Haven. The award recipients were being recognized for their commitments organizing priorities that address racial equity, climate change, voting rights, and the common good. People's World was founded by communists in 1924, and it continues to feature Marxist analysis and opinion developed by the Communist Party, according to its website. The event honored Connecticut State Senator Gary Winfield and others, and during his acceptance speech, Winfield specifically stated that he's aware that there's a relationship between the Amistad Awards and the Communist Party. He said, "I know who's in the room with me, and I'm happy to be here." Winfield did that because a couple of years ago, Senator Richard Blumenthal spoke at the Amistad Awards, and when he got called out in the press for speaking at the Communist event, he denied all knowledge of the organization's ties to the Communist Party. Why am I bringing all of this up? Well, first of all, it's undeniable that the Amistad Awards are directly tied to the Communist Party. And second of all, the teachers' union that operates in Greenwich either knowingly or unknowingly helped to fund the Amistad Awards through union dues money that was used to purchase an ad in the awards ad book. In case you didn't see it, the CEA ad said in large typeface at the top, unity, diversity, equity, solidarity. And then the text below read, "The Connecticut Education Association congratulates all of the People's Award Amistad winners." So there you have it. The teachers' union knowingly provided financial support to a communist-run award ceremony demonstrating that they are in solidarity with their comrades at the People's World. Most parents I know were shocked to hear that the teachers' union openly supported communism like this. Parents definitely do not want the principles of communism in the schools, the struggle of the oppressed class against the oppressors, critical race theory, critical social justice theory. We don't want that to be taught as if communism were a good thing and embraced the way that the union has embraced it. It's clearly not a good thing. It's never worked, and it's the antithesis of the capitalism on which our country has been founded and thrives. Superintendent Jones and Board of Education members, can you please help me understand what you're doing in terms of policy to make absolutely sure that the teachers, especially those who are members of GEA and who support the communism awards that just took place in New Haven, understand that their personal politics, as well as the radical communists embracing politics of the union, end at the threshold of the school? Thank you.
Thank you. As that was our last speaker, I am going to move on to our monthly reports. Start, thank you, starting with the superintendent's report, and I will turn this over to Dr. Jones. And perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. Just as a reminder, it's hard to believe that next week is our last week before we go to December break. I don't know where the year went. We will have an early release next Friday, and that'll be a reminder in our note tomorrow. I also want to take the opportunity this time of the year just to say congratulations to all of our musicians across the district. Laura Newell and her team do so many concerts, you know, from elementary all the way through high school and just phenomenal job, one of the best music, obviously, programs in the country. I also want to mention that our curriculum team held a very informative overview for the community, which PTA hosted. I know they had over 60 people that watched that meeting or participated in that meeting. It was also recorded. We will push that recording out again tomorrow for people who missed it. And it really does a great job of giving an overview of the curriculum. We have told the community we were doing a deeper dive, especially our Jewish community, who had asked when, where the Holocaust is actually taught in our curriculum and other questions. And so we've updated all the forward-facing documents and also just gone back in and looked at the curriculum and really helped the community understand better where those, where those components fall. So I encourage you to watch that if you have an interest, you know, in the curriculum from that lens. Also, I just want to add that YWCA has really become even more of a partner. They've always been a partner with us. But you know, this year they partnered with the swim program. I think I mentioned that last month, and that's just going, it's just fantastic. The kids are loving it. It's just been a terrific program and implementation. But in January, when we come back from the break, they've also seen that we have a huge need for more after-school care. As most of our community is aware, Boys and Girls Club is under construction. And so we lost a lot of seats, and parents were really challenged trying to find what to do after school with their children. And they're starting, they recognize that, and they're partnering and starting a brand-new program in January. And they've already got, you know, families enrolling, and I want to say thank you to the YWCA because that was a real need in our community. So I think that's all. Well, let me mention one more thing. I do know the board is fully aware that we had the SAT issue at the high school, and I do want to, just if anybody happens to be watching, and you were one of those 17 students that were impacted by that and where tests were invalidated. We're still digging in with College Board to make sure that we communicate exactly how it happened. But of those 17 students, they're retesting on Saturday. That's unanticipated. And it's a really difficult time of the year for students to be having to go through that again. I do want to say College Board has been extremely cooperative in trying to help us problem-solve exactly what happened. It looks like, which I had mentioned in a note to the families, that there were tests from October of '21 where they took an old version. And for the integrity of the test, SAT never repeats a test, so it invalidated all the scores. But again, just on behalf of the district, it's a College Board Day. The SAT is College Board, but there are children. There are students. So I just want to apologize on behalf of the district that they're having to go through that. Thank you.
Ms. Stowe?
So I'm sure Dr. Jones was expecting a question on this, since I am, my son is one of the lucky 70 students, I guess, who is retaking a test on Saturday as a result of this debacle. And I speak for him and the junior that very thoughtfully put together an email today. The mistake needs to be investigated, and that's disturbing of itself. I know that you and Ralph were only made aware of the situation, I think by me. And the fact that there were someone, it seems there was knowledge of it prior to you, I think is something that really needs to be looked into because the, you know, I think this junior that sent the email today expressed it. He would have been taking, practicing last weekend. And the fact that now they only have three days to sort of get themselves both prepared, but even mentally prepared for this is really upsetting.
And I totally agree with you, and I think the student's email was right on point. Yeah. I don't know if anybody else is going to bring it up, but I know both of our student government leaders and our junior representative had come to us talking about the midterm and finals policy. And I would like to, I mean, I don't know if you want to address that. I, you know, I know that that's something in the past that we've, that's come here and we've discussed it, and I, you know, you know, I don't know if this has been brought to your attention, that there's been some concern shared with us. I mean, I don't know if you want to bring it forward also, but I, you know, I know that I've heard from many students who weren't aware that this was happening until all of a sudden, you know, closer to midterm time. And the stress and anxiety level for these students is through the roof.
Yeah, I'm happy to add to that. I think the junior class president framed it really well, but just to give a little bit more perspective, what I believe has happened the past few years, so we go back to COVID, right, where there weren't midterms or finals. We brought it back. And there was this concept, which my understanding is a lot of school districts and colleges do, that it's the better of. It's not, you know, 10, it's basically if it's going to impact your grade, you know, say you have one really bad day and you had four strong quarters, it's going to have a 10% effect. But say you had a bad quarter and the midterm could make up for it, then it goes to 20%. So I like the idea that there's flexibility and that it gives a child a chance to either recover or not to, not to suffer because of one sort of big day. So I think it's thoughtful. It was a great idea, and I'm not sure why we just sort of scrapped it as a result.
Did Cody have, did you have something to say?
Are they graded on curves? So is it, is it like effectively a grade inflation technique, the system that we have, and we're going? Because otherwise, there would be like the same amount of winners and losers, depending on whatever the grading system is. But if you have a midterm grading system that just adds free optionality to increase your grades, then it's inflationary for grades, right? Is that why all the kids seem to like the COVID? Or I just don't understand this.
Well, I don't think it's necessarily inflationary. It could be less deflationary, I guess, if you're, so if you had like two A's and all of a sudden failed, right, you're, I mean, it's Right? You're, I mean, it's, you're going to choose 10% rather than 20%, right?
So then it is inflated because, because if you failed and it's on a curve, if it's on a curve, then just giving people optionality just allows everyone's grades to be slightly higher. Right? It has to be mathematically.
Well, we have at least one former teacher and, well, one, two former teachers from the high school sitting here. We can see, I don't know if there's grade and grade curving, but I can say I, I know that the, the change in weighting is not, it's not intended to specifically, I don't exactly how to explain what I was trying to say, but you were talking about boosting the score. It's not necessarily about boosting the score. It's that, as I'm sure you know, every student that can come in and have one really bad day, gets sick. And it's a huge percentage of their grade, but they balance it between midterm and the final. So it's not, you know, right, it's, from what I remember, it was one or the other. It wasn't, you just get to cut it.
So do we need to prepare them for college? I just have a question though. So when was, who, who made the decision and when was it made and when was it communicated?
It was made by the high school who generally, you know, has weighed in. And I think they messaged before the year started. And then it was student government talked about it actually just this, this last week in student government. So, you know, I think it's, I think it's always been an issue for the students. They were advocating last year and student government was talking about it. And I do think it is high stress. When it comes to, to curving, what I would say is that unless you have any assessment that is absolutely automated, you push out the score and that's what goes in the grade book. Been that way forever. So unless it's absolutely standardized, you know, there's, it depends on who you have as a teacher.
I mean, I'm happy to make a motion to get a sense of the meeting because I do think that, I mean, hearing from these students and hearing more and more about the stress levels and the fact that other school systems are doing this, I think that it's, um, I don't see really the downside. So, oh, sorry.
No, I just wanted to add something, which is just, um, because my-
400 and uh, there was $411,000 and change. I don't have it either in front of me, but that was approved by the B E T. That was intended to cover this unit that's there now. So hopefully if the issue comes back up, it was postponed to January. And if there's a clarifying sense of the meeting resolution, they can reduce the appropriation by the other amount and hopefully just appropriate the 411. That'll cover the emergency unit that we're currently carrying the cost on. We then asked the, we then asked formally, uh, which we're working on now. We were just finalizing the language, but I met with the chair yesterday and the vice chair. Uh, that the Energy Management Advisory Committee kind of takes lead on the next steps of the community conversation. They have representatives from the Board of Ed. Men to the committee. So they really are the entity that can kind of navigate the conversation, put together the analysis, go for the other pieces and come back.
Well, I was gonna say, I think we can add that as a possible agenda item for our next meeting because I mean, this is just, I was just.
We have a long way to go.
Yeah, well, I was just bringing this up as being the liaison that I had gone, you know, for, uh, board to the RTM. And just the feedback that I, we had gotten was that we would just need a sense of the meeting in order to, at the very least, say that we would like to support the four hundred and eleven and change, uh, to be, you know, moved forward, even if the rest of the proposal is, uh.
If you want to give me a couple of minutes, I'll give you the exact dollar amount I have it. Or if you want to just pass it as passed, I can.
Well, I was gonna go back and look up at my notes, but, um.
Well, let me go grab it. I'll, it'll take me one minute. I have it right on my computer.
Sorry, being, having the internet down is, uh, is, is not, is not easy.
Acting Chair Hirsch, uh, the audience at home is back online. Is there a document that needs to be shared? Is that an issue that you're dealing with?
No, no, we were just, didn't have access to notes because it was, you know, in the cloud. But they're back, uh, we, is Wi-Fi back on? No. Oh, fine. Okay. I was gonna say, we can, in, in, in essence, we have a lot going on. We can, I can make that sense of the meeting motion later. Um, so let's move along. So we'll come back to that. Dr. Jones, you want to do the Western Middle School soil update?
Yeah, I, I don't have a whole lot today other than, because it's been in the press. We've talked about it. It's mobilized. We're just so excited. Everything's full steam ahead. Uh, when we come back from the break, uh, we will get another, start working on a capital update newsletter that'll have a very detailed, but there's a lot of stuff online if anybody has a real interest.
I'm thrilled to see that the shovel is in the ground there. Something we've been waiting for, for a long time. Uh, next up, when he comes back, is, uh, is Blaze with budget transfers? Yes, well, then he moves to that. Yeah, do you want to present or do you want, does anybody have any specific questions?
I know, I don't know. I went through it and I don't.
It's kind of impressive as to how reliant we are on, uh, this sort of technology.
Did anybody have any questions on their informational only, uh, transfers? Fairly straightforward. It's largely a lot of the work that Patrick and Kim are doing on account cleanup. Uh, so the salary adjustments, that's what you see here. We're just cleaning up. Uh, what we've put in place are definitions, uh, for what different accounts are used for different scenarios. And so that first transfer is we've, we put a definition of where Schedule C should always be charged. Uh, it was being charged kind of all over the place. The next thing is, is on nursing. This impacts what you see in the budget too. We've consolidated nursing from being split all over the district into a centralized district account. Uh, our nursing director, Jessica, uh, she is really on top of everything. Now her budget is in one spot and she can manage the district wide program in a single account. So all the staff are in that account too. So those are, those are, uh, just informational only transfers, but they both impact the budget. You'll see a lot of transfer, a lot of dollars moving around because we're moving them in twenty-four and we also moved it in twenty-five.
Does anybody have questions? Okay, then if not, we can move on to the monthly financial report. You're still up Blaze.
Yes, yeah. So monthly, I'll just kind of run through, uh, right now fiscal year, uh, twenty-four, uh, November thirty ending. Uh, revenue is, uh, coming in stronger than budgeted. A lot of that is work, uh, thanks to the work again, like we say every, uh, every month almost that Dr. H is doing, um, to capture more cost. Uh, on a side note, her and I, uh, actually met, I think it was yesterday, to, uh, come up with, uh, some resources in how we can capture additional, um, additional revenue for special ed excess costs because she's really done a good job in going after revenue, uh, for odd district and what she had brought up is kind of how do we use resources to, to start capturing some of the in district cost to drive revenue up further. So we're working on something. We might come back to you with like another resolution that would allow us to access some of the revenue funds to collect even more revenue, um, which might be a good idea. Uh, operating expenditure, uh, the interim for special ed was critical and it was funded through the RTM on Monday night. Um, that should cover the projected deficit that we've been running for, uh, special education. Um, utilities, you know, continue to place pressure on the budget. One of the reasons for that is because, uh, we are paying back, uh, energy efficiency upgrade loans through the electric bill. Um, those loans, I think when they were put in place at the time, the thought was probably that they would pay for themselves through the savings, but they don't actually do that. The underlying assumptions that were used, uh, were, was a, not the kilowatt hour that we pay. So that's putting additional pressure on the, uh, the utilities operating budget. And then you've heard a lot about subs. Um, I won't run through everything since we have a long agenda. So unless anybody has questions, I'll, I'll take questions.
Anybody have questions? Cody, looks like he's leaning ahead.
Can you email me the details on that environmental loan thing?
Yeah, it's the, it's the energize CT loan.
Just for my own enjoyment.
Yeah. And, and the program is, you can get a lot of cash through the program, but one of the things that they did is use like a standard utility hour, uh, kilowatt. It's not what we were paying. It's like double what we were paying. So the payback time on the financing model is two to three times longer than when they were running the scenarios for the savings. They're using fifteen cents a kilowatt hour assumption. At the time, we were only paying seven, even after the thirty percent increase, we're paying ten. So the payback time that was assumed for the coverage, you know, I'll, I'll send you the spreadsheet, but that's the summary of why it's not covering itself.
Anybody else have, anybody else have questions? No? Well, then I'm going to move on to the, uh, big excitement for the night, which is our operating budget. Dr. Jones?
I, I think, Mr. Kittle, did you want to start with the update from the committee work?
Yeah, um, I think I've had a chance to talk with some of you about this. Uh, I think that, um, Blaze and Patrick and Kimberly have done a fantastic job, um, assembling information that's been extremely helpful for going through the budget. Um, just also to say it, I, I know a lot of people were talking about the budget guidelines tonight. I know this, that could be in trouble, but I don't care about the budget guidelines. I've just found the budget process to be extremely useful for bringing up important policy questions for us and kind of a good, healthy, um, process in general for managing the schools. Um, I'd say it, it, the, the consensus among the folks on the budget committee, uh, is that we're still in the middle of that process and we think that it might be, um, premature to vote on the budget tonight as we continue some of the work. Um, there's been a lot of, uh, work happening on it and I think it's been very productive. Um, and so, you know, I think, uh, the thought was to delay the vote, be able to complete a few more of the projects, um, that we have underway and then, and then bring it back, uh, in early, um, twenty twenty-four.
So just, I, I, I know I made it very clear where, um, I had spoken with, um, Ben Brannion on our, on the town side and as long as we, and we can, when we get to the very end of agenda planning, as long as we can meet, uh, to actually make a final vote by January third or fourth and get that to him first thing by the fifth, uh, it will not, uh, negatively impact the town's side of the process in order to present the budget to the BET on the time. So we can get to that when we get to agenda planning.
And I'm optimistic we can push it even more.
Well, I made a promise, but you know, then I'll, I'll let, you know, leave that to you.
So Cody, from a budget committee standpoint, I mean, given the holidays and the timing, is it the intent to meet sometime between now and then and provide additional recommendations? And do you think that that's feasible with scheduling?
Yes. Blaze told me he's free on the twenty-fourth.
Yep.
No, I think we'll get some additional time set up. Uh, we also can do it, you know, a few shorter meetings, um, and some of the analysis. A lot of it is analysis your team is doing that sort of, you know, we're still in the middle of. And, um, yeah.
Yeah, the timeline, the timeline is obviously tight and, and like Cody said, it'll kind of depend on what we, we, what we look like. The town, if they're going to make the presentation, the first selectman's office can't project the mill rate increase of the first selectman's budget without having what the Board of Ed budget will be. So that it's really, I don't know, I'm not going to speak to the legal piece of it because I have no idea. I think we'd have to probably reach out also to the law department to find out, but I know that like what Karen's talking about, to get the books printed and to do the mill rate calculation, that's the timing for the January fourth. They can't do it. They can't, they run the mill rate calculation without the, the Board of Ed budget.
Uh, I, I'm no lawyer, nor do I play one on TV, but I did read through the charter, which points to the BET guidelines and the, I, I mean, I can read, I, I present it, but the BET guidelines, they, they didn't follow their own guidelines because they were supposed to present and, uh, their budget guidelines to all town departments in October and vote on the budget, their guidelines in October. And they didn't do that until, uh, I believe, uh, just the start of December. So it's pushing everything back, but I, I don't want to, uh, ca- cause more delay for the town. But I also feel like we are a large percentage of the budget and it's really important for us to do our due diligence, um, before we make any big decisions that may have a serious consequence to our students and, and in other ways. I mean, and, and I think that that was the feeling of the board, but I still, and I can pass that back over. I'd love for you to share what the budget committee's, uh, thoughts were, were on the presentation from Dr. Jones, uh, for reductions. And then I think as the board, we can sort of discuss that. I don't know if you want to go line by line or at least because some of the things I think we can make decisions on tonight.
Yeah, I'm interested in folks' opinions on this. We can, we did a line by line vote in the budget committee, uh, to give the, um, uh, administration some guidance just from a policy standpoint. If, um, if people want to revisit some of those items, uh, and do it at a, you know, informal kind of, all of this is effectively guidance when it comes to policy because it's actually, it's not setting a policy. It's just saying, hey, here's what we think we're going to like plug a number in on the spreadsheet for. So we, um, I'm fine either way. I, I think that, uh, we can, um, we can do it in the, you know, making a motion for adjustments to the budget, uh, at the meeting where we approve the budget or if it, Tony, if you think that it's, would it, is it helpful for you if we do a few more of these now, or if you just work off of the existing budget committee guidelines and open minded?
To actually have another budget committee meeting?
No, I think Karen, was your question if we just should do votes, do, what are they called again? The sense of the meeting?
Uh, I, I have just a, my thought would be depends, depends what our time's going to look like. So the budget committee may, has recommendations to the full board. Uh, some of those were unanimous. So maybe those are easier ones to, to maybe get done. What I think if we're going to really extend it to like the midnight deadline of the town, let's just say we still think we might submit on January fifth. We as staff still have to make all these changes in munis for then the town to be able to do this. So let's say tonight we get full board buying on consensus on let's, the, the items that the budget committee did four zero, they did all the analysis. You want to take them. If you vote on those tonight, we'll basically just go in and munis now and start making all the changes now so that it's just less work the night before in case we come up with another fifteen, twenty more changes.
Um, one way to do that is we could start by just seeing if we could do a vote or collectively all of the, say, um, sorry, do a vote for everything that was a four O, so we don't have to go through. And if that fails, then we could go through each one line item. How would, uh, how would folks feel about that?
Well, I think the board hasn't had an opportunity to weigh in. So if you do it all as one motion, then we can't, we'd have to vote no if we had questions on something.
No, no, that, that's fine. You could vote no. It just, if, if five of us were on board with all of the four Os, then it just saves the time.
I think given the community interest in things, I think, you know, we have to do this, still due diligence of going line by line and, and, and explaining the rationale around, um, these decisions. That's pain.
Okay, sure.
Well, I just, you know, we were presented with these reductions at our last meeting in the board, although the budget committee has had discussions, the board has not, and the public has not had the opportunity to really hear where we're, we're thinking. And so.
Well, the budget meetings are public.
Right. I do think the first one can be more expeditious. I think some of these can be more.
Yeah, um, okay.
Maybe Mike, uh, can you share it? Now you Mike, Mike, eh, can you share your, uh, your screen? I think you have everything too. So people know what we're talking about. The recommendations from the budget committee. Yeah, that's the document. Yep. We actually did too, at your request, uh, the budget committee's request, we kind of did, I guess, what we're calling a pro forma, uh, quick analysis on what the numbers look like. And then we answered a few more of the questions in here. Uh, this is a PowerPoint that Patrick whipped up, but this first slide, just so people know what we're talking about. These are the budget committee, uh, recommendations and votes. This was what was in the packet and posted online, this slide right here. Yeah. And if you actually go to the next slide, Mike, real quick, uh, we did a, a quick analysis basically on the, the net impact to the taxpayer. Um, and this was something we talked about a lot at the budget committee. We just reformatted it in a way that aligns with also, uh, the recommendations of the BOE Budget Committee. Um, you know, so if you really think, we heard, I think a number of community members talk about looking at apples to apples. So we also would look at the net impact of the revenue. Just as a reminder, year to year revenue is going up about a, a, a quarter of a million dollars year over year. So that's in your mill rate calculation, your impact to the taxpayer. And, and out of all of the interim, I think the fair one, Patrick and I were looking at the fair one to really use for a revised budget to new budget is the, uh, interim for out of district tuition that's tied to the law change. Um, and that's really just, this is adjusting it. So if you look at the, uh, impact to the taxpayer, those unanimous, uh, and then the majority votes, you can see what that looks like year over year. Um, and if you also look at it, Kathleen, to use your word pro forma, um, you see it like for A, you can see six percent is the impact on the year over year increase. Five point two percent would be what, what we're calling the pro forma, the, the impact to the taxpayer, uh, budget to budget. Same thing with the B, uh, the majority supported items, five point four percent, four point six. So I think it's important to convey the impact both year over year on budget and then also specifically the, the net impact to the taxpayer. But something that, that Cody pointed out that the budget committee's been doing is like we have on the bottom here, the BET guideline. But some, the, all of the conversations have really focused on, here is the impact. That's important because we have a finite amount of resources, but let's stick to conversations that, you know, Tony started out with a budget that everything behind the six point five, there's logic driven decisions to get to six point five. And then further through the budget committee, we're looking at maintaining logic driven decision making. Um, you know, rather than kind of just putting up random numbers or setting random targets. And I think that that's been a really important part of the conversation for the full board to know that it's, it's not like we're just sitting here and picking one of these percentage numbers on the side. And, and the meetings haven't been just sitting there and seeing if we can hit that target. It's been, this is good context for us to have because this is the impact to our community. But specifically, let's make sure we're talking about conversations that are still driven in some type of logic behind what we're doing. Cody, if I kind of summarized that accurately.
Yeah. Yeah, pro forma away.
I mean, again, why did we choose the one point one five versus the two point one?
I'm using 1.15 here because some of the, some of the pieces are, we did add positions. Some of those required, maybe all of them required, some of the positions don't exist yet. Law department piece, the discrepancy on the law department, that will, we didn't budget for that this year either. That will go back to the town. Ideally, as if we get through the budget process, that stays with the law department. This one was one that I think you could logically, it's just directly tied to the law change. There's no policy decision in that. There's no staffing decision. It's just literally tied to the age change in the law and the, and the increase in the population. We could debate that approach and I'm, and I'm open to a different approach. This would be, I think, a very conservative way to look at it.
I mean, you're also just, I mean, this, to me, you should be going off of actuals, but.
Well, it depends what you're looking at. So i- if we're looking at the impact to the, the taxpayer, and I don't think this is worth talking about now, but we could talk about two things. We could talk about the mill rate impact, like the interim is funded out of fund balance, cash on hand of the town. That's why I kind of would prefer to do more analysis at the budget committee level so that we come up with what we, we want our logic to be. It's the same thing with what are we going to define as mill rate impact to the taxpayer? If we're going to look at year over year, budget to budget? I mean, we could also look at actual, but that's not going to be the mill rate calculation change on the percentage. So I would say that we should come up with what we want the logic to be at the budget committee level that we all agree on and then go from there.
Just make sure we're all clear on what this is saying, right? So in 2024, the original budget was on 182 million and change. The, the superintendent's proposed budget for this year, the original's proposed budget was an increase of six and a half percent.
Correct.
Since our original budget last year, we went out and we had to ask for an interim from the RTM and the BET because of a change to state law, which increased our state education, special education costs by over a million dollars. So, so the 2024 budget is really now 183 million. So the, when you calculate the actual increase of the projected brother from the actual budget, we're at 5.7% an increase if we're looking at what the actual budget ended up being this year.
Yes. And I think what Kathleen's saying is the, the total interim cost was 2.1 million. What, what I'm using is the direct out of district tuition cost because I think it's one that's unanimously agreed upon. The rest of it, I think we could, we could talk about.
Karen, if we're looking at it that way, wouldn't we also add in the interim cost of what we needed for Hamilton Avenue?
I know that would, that's.
Oh, that's out of capital.
Operating only, yeah. Parkway, the two, two other interims, Parkway and Ham Ave were capital.
Were capital. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think to keep the conversation focused, Mike, I would really go back one slide so that the chair could, could give an overview of the conversation that we've kind of had so far.
And so this will just be sense of the meeting, just so that you guys have the comfort level to go and enter whatever you need to enter into the system. So it's less work later on, right?
You can make a motion to make the, these individual reductions. We're just not going, we, if we want to take a motion to, to postpone the vote on the actual overall budget, that's separate. You can make a motion per line item.
But then.
This is an action item, so you can make a motion per line item.
But then when we have the line item changes, when it comes back to us in January, will we then work off of that new? Cool. So then.
It's a good approach.
Let's make a motion to use the ARP for curriculum investment as a change to the.
Well, do you want to just point out, you know, that it was discussed at the budget committee? So even just anybody that can't see is four O, right? That the budget committee supported it?
Yep. The motion is just to incorporate that into the budget.
So you'd like to make a motion to use the ARP funding, the rest of the ARP funding for, towards in curriculum investment?
Yes.
For 799, 925? Okay. Okay. All in favor?
No, you are actually discussion.
I do not want to do that because we do this extensively with the budget committee. And if we're just going to repeat what we do at the budget committee, we shouldn't have budget committee meetings. So if one of you wants to, go ahead, but.
We have $800,000 in ARP set aside for curriculum. It was intentionally, it was originally being held for the waiver. We are here proposing to accelerate the fiscal year 25 curriculum program partially into 2024. This would zero out the curriculum, district wide curriculum budget in 25, push it to ARP, but allow us to also simultaneously accelerate the investment. And Mark's team really put together a comprehensive plan for the 800,000 and they'd be ready to start executing it now instead of waiting until July 1. So it reduces your next year budget by 800,000, allows the team to start executing the funds earlier. The risk we discussed was that it zeros out part of the budget and put, will put a pressure point on 26.
It's government money, federal government money on textbooks, which is one reason why all those emails we're getting from parents are so silly. It's like, how many of them are opposed to this? Because if they're saying that we shouldn't make a single change to the budget, then that means they're opposed to this. People ready to vote yet?
Yes.
Ready to vote? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's an eight O.
The next, I'll make a motion to increase summer school fees 10% plus in the amount of $20,000 change to the budget.
Discussion?
I don't know. Maybe Mike thinks that this requires explanation.
I just have a question. How did you arrive at 20% versus any other number?
I'm glad you asked that. And we're actually, part of the ongoing work in the budget committee is actually taking a deeper look at all of the random percentages and all the random pricing that we have on everything. And so that's a work in progress. So the, the short answer is I don't think in any particularly thoughtful way. It's just starting with a number and we'll be back with more when we're done with our next round of budget committee fund. But I asked the same question and that's why we have more follow up.
Actually, can I ask a quick question? It, it points to the fact that we, we were presented with fees, tuition and fees, rental fees. I think the first look that we had at rental fees was in September and it didn't come back to us yet for approval. And then we had a look at tuition in November, but we withdrew the motions. We didn't vote on that either. Because you know, it was part of the budget development process. So I don't know if the budget committee, are you looking at, at those costs as well? Because they're not really in line with actually the, the increasing costs in those two departments. And I think that's another area that we can look for, not that anybody wants to raise fees and tuitions, but I think increasing our revenue will also sort of help offset some of these costs because our, we haven't changed those in a while. So are you looking at those as well?
Oh yeah. That's some of the really good stuff that we're getting into. Yep, Mike.
Okay.
That's not specific to this, this motion right here, which is just specific to summer school. Which should be noted that we have things in place for students that can't, can't, can't afford in scholarships. So this is a.
Right. These are for tuition only classes.
Yeah. And we have summer school rates for people on free and reduced lunches, which are usually like 10% of what the costs are. They're quite low. It's like $50 or something.
So I would call the question.
Yep. Call it a question.
I don't know what I was going to say, but ready to vote? Anybody else? Okay. All in favor? Laura?
Yes.
Okay. Eight O. Next.
Well, now I'm glad we're moving on to one that will be easy and non controversial. I'll, I'll make a motion to adjust the budget for reduction in world language and K2 for the amount of 200,000.
I got a question.
You don't even want to hear me enforce plays to give a summary?
Sure.
No, I was kidding. Please, do you want to say anything?
I, I think that it might be best to ask questions and I also might just turn this one over to Dr. Jones to talk about it.
I'm happy to be the bad guy on this one too, if you want.
Well, I think we have some data. Do we have some data to show about the, the different programming through?
Well, we started, we started pulling that today. So if we don't approve the budget tonight, I'll have more data because every time I ask a question, I would get, you know, another question. Because as I would look at the data and what we're trying to look at is, is there a difference in schools that have it in K2 and performance going into sixth grade versus the schools that don't? And then it also, I, I now want to be, you know, respectful to obviously JC community as part of their magnet school. You know, if we need to look at, looking at it even differently and splitting, like even JC and Ham Ave. Ham Ave, when we talked to the principal, was very supportive of this move, but that's not part of their magnet school. And she is desperately looking for more instructional time, especially in early childhood. Because every, you know, every minute takes away from something else. But being in a magnet school versus not. So we've had really good conversations this week about it. So I, I will say, I think on the number side too, just, I think the committee had a really good discussion and thank you, Patrick, for the analysis you did that showed us our average teacher salary is 110,000 and almost everybody in the district is at top scale. So when somebody mentioned what the teacher salaries were, they might've been looking at just kind of the mid range. But we just determined on this committee with the good work you got done, that that's not actually what we look like anymore.
The budget assumption here that we're using, because really what we're doing is budget assumptions, but the budget translates, budget is a policy document, would be basically the elimination of two FTE at an assumption of $100,000 per position. There's a, it's, it's really ISD and New Lebanon have it as required as part of their, you know, charter to, to their school. So this is Hamilton Avenue and Julian Curtis. That's what those two positions are for the two programs. Out of the four schools that have it too, are required to keep it too, would eliminate two FTE.
So I have a question and I think this is for Dr. Jones, which is obviously hearing a lot of the Julian Curtis parents here this evening, is that being a, a magnet school? What does that look like next year for them? And will parents then have an option to magnet somewhere else to ISD or or, or New Lab that will still have the program?
Wish I had my computer and I'd have my numbers in front of me, but one of the, one of the things I was looking at today is what's really interesting is a large portion of their magnet comes from New Lab and Hamilton Avenue, who both have K2 as well. So it's just interesting why people choose to go to a certain school. Like Costco, I think has like literally less than five. It might be like two or three students. So we're trying to go in and really do all of that analysis. What it would mean for next year is you just wouldn't start it in K1, two, you would still have a very robust three, four, five, because they do two languages, which is French and Spanish. Our other schools don't do that.
I was just going to say, this was a four O vote in the committee, but I do think that the, some of the questions that came up afterwards are pretty interesting and it's what, part of the reason why we want to delay it broadly. So even though I have an inclination on how I feel about this, I would like to see some of the additional information myself. So, you know, just, I don't think anyone, I, I think it's this, some of these, I think we fully fleshed out at the committee level and some maybe warrants like closer examination. And as someone who voted in favor of this at the committee, you know, probably would maybe abstain to, just to see, please, even if that adds a little bit of work for you guys and by delaying whatever computer things you do.
It, it, I think it's fully warranted based on the feedback we have, you know, I think we reached a good consensus on some instructional pieces when we had the conversation in the budget committee about the increase that it would provide. But however, with all the questions we've been getting, Dr. Jones actually already is really, has a lot of data she's put together with the team that I think will help this board make a message, a, a, a decision that can also be messaged well to the community and you can all can feel confident in. We, we can handle it on our end, so it's okay.
Could I make an amended motion?
Well, Kathleen had a question first, unless you have an amended motion.
I mean, it was maybe where Laura's going, just that maybe we should do it for Hamilton Avenue. Right? That's, I think we're all agreeing on that.
Yeah, I, I will withdraw my motion and I'll make a new motion to, for reduction of world language in K2 plus for 100,000 change to the budget.
So you are with Cody, I, I, I'm saying this aloud because our clerk, with the video down, can't see who's making motions and seconding them. So Cody withdrawing and you've made a second motion and Kathleen, you've seconded it, correct? Thank you.
Video's running.
All I know is he asked me to say it aloud because he doesn't have access.
It's just that you typically, the chair would say out loud who the seconder is because I'm sharing my screen. I only have you guys in a very small window, so I can't physically see who's seconding. So that's the reason behind that. Thank you very much.
No problem. Come on, Mike.
And, and just to reiterate, I think just on the last point, we can go back and with the new information, we'll do a deep dive at the budget committee level and the question for JC, but with him have especially given that has the support of the principal. And I think the original rationale for why we did a four O vote on this probably still sticks. Yeah.
Does anybody have any, okay, Sophie?
I just, just in terms of JC and I, I love having the data and all of that, but I, I think one of the things that I heard several times tonight from the JC families is parents that have children in the school already who have gone through and now they have younger kids coming in. And I think, you know, as a parent, I appreciate that. Like if you chose that school and you've had one or two older children go through and now you're having a kindergartner come in and there would be this sort of pretty dramatic change in the curriculum, how difficult that is as a family. I mean, because even if you could choose like, okay, well now we'll send our kindergartner to another school that has the program, but you don't necessarily want to split your kids up. So I just think, I don't know that everything can get captured in the data, that sort of qualitative issue.
That will be captured because we don't even know yet how many parents are magneting in and what, we, we can look at how many kids are there that are magneting in. How many students in the district are magneting out? How many of the ones that are magneted in have older siblings there? Some of the other really important data, by the way, is 34% of fifth graders at JC are math proficient. So when we talk about, it's not to me, the budget cutting has nothing to do with any of this. It's not, it's just with the real questions we have to ask are when we look at our strategic priorities and goals that this board's spent a lot of time on and set. Math and reading feature very prominently. And what do we do about a school where hours of instructional time are being devoted to something that isn't at the top of our list for strategic goals? That to me is the main focus and what we'll dig into from a data standpoint.
Karen? Yeah, I just want to reiterate that point, but I want to tie it, and I agree with you completely, Cody, and that would be very important for that data. But I think it's, I want to direct that point to Hamilton Avenue and the fact that Principal Fox has said that this is she has no problem with this adjustment with respect to her school. And I respect that oversight and thoughtfulness in that, given where the academics are overall at Hamilton Avenue that we've seen and her direction in taking it, which I think feeds right into the strategic priorities that we've set. So I compliment her for making that decision. I think it's a good one.
She wanted to focus, I think, more on their length of their ELA, which is a strategic goal, correct?
Yep.
So does anybody else have comments? I don't know. Laura, did you still want to say anything? If not, I'm happy to call the question on.
I think, I think the motion as amended is acceptable. Thank you. It's what I would have made.
Okay, perfect. So does anybody else have a comment? Otherwise I'm calling the question, the motion to reduce K2 plus at Hamilton Avenue on favor?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Cody, were there any others that you wanted to bring forward from the budget committee specifically?
How do folks feel about the other three? I mean, I'd be interested in. We should, the deduct, the, the GHS scheduling one, we probably can do because that was an abstention. I feel like.
No, I think we need more. Well, I mean, I can't speak to, I think you need more data. I think you need more data. Yeah.
Might be helpful because the, we, there were a lot of comments tonight and we got a lot of emails about things we're actually not talking about, like intermural sports and things like that. So I do think it is helpful, if not to vote on it, at least to talk through a little, just even if Dr. Jones, it's a brief summary about what the, the thinking is around the majority ones and, and whatnot, because I think the clearing up of misconceptions, I think, is helpful. I think there were a lot of people that very, very worried about things that we're not necessarily on the chopping block.
But we still have the three others, we adjust pre K ratio, right? Reduce physical education. So if you want to do those first.
I'd go through each one. Yeah, just go through each one.
Okay.
Pull it off the table.
Sure. Let's do the, I'll make a motion to change the budget to adjust pre, pre K ratio. The amount of 184,000. Kathleen seconds.
I just have a comment on that discussion. My understanding is that making that adjustment with the ratio actually brings us in alignment with our surrounding districts, which include and please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's New Canaan, Darien, Westport and Wilton. Is that right?
It's pretty much everybody in Southern Fairfield County. We were, we were the outlier.
And can I adding something else? What's cool about this one is again, going against the false narrative that all this is just some crazy set of cuts or whatever. This is actually an expansion of operational control for Dr. Jones and the administrators. Because currently they have situations, you know, each setting these classes can be very situation specific. And they only currently are allowed to go with a specific ratio and a tight max class size. And what we're doing is these are not, when we say class size 17, that's just a max. So they can still do 12 or 13, it doesn't matter. It's just lifting and adding more flexibility for them. And that added flexibility is what creates the efficiency that drives the savings. But it doesn't necessarily mean that the class sizes go up or that the ratio, and actually, we're doing the same thing with the ratio where instead of being fixed at a certain ratio, we're banding it. Where, where we say, actually, you can be anywhere in this range. And so the idea was to give more operational flexibility to the folks that are closest to the situation.
I thought it was not changing class sizes for pre K. I thought it was just adjusting the ratios to the state required 50 50 as opposed to what we have, which is 60 40.
This will actually allow them to go between 50 and 60. And just the way that the math works is that has the practical impact of in some cases, depending on what ratio they decide, the class could go up to 17. Did I get that right?
You did, yes.
But it's their, it's their call, like based on what they think this specific situation might, you know, warrant.
Well, I was just gonna say that especially when it comes to preschool, these are, you know, especially students with need at that age. These are some of our, you know, needy students and need oftentimes really need the, the direct attention. I mean, I would love more, a little bit more information as to how that change might impact you know, students as they move forward, because the earlier we provide intervention and support for these students, the better their success usually is when they enter elementary and going forward with needing less services. Not all certainly, but there might be some correlation. So I don't know if we have any of that information as to how that might, you know, or how we've seen it in surrounding communities that have made changes.
Yeah, I mean, I, because we are so much lower, we have more staff in our pre K classes. We have a lower number, a lower ratio. This is not something that we would have even discussed if Dr. Holly Gantaller had, you know, concerns. And I think that out of the budget committee, the great thing was the flexibility discussion. And especially going into next year with the legislative change, it would be very helpful because we still don't even know how many parents are going to request to stay in pre K versus going to kindergarten with a September one versus the December, you know, age cutoff change. And I don't know, Mike, if you can bring up the Q and A chart, might be helpful just as a refresher. And that may be hard for you to do, but you know, it is online and there's the chart. It's the very last question on the Q and A. Where it actually has the chart and they can refresh everybody.
Yeah, I think, I think we consulted while he's doing that to fill the space. We consulted with Dr. H and Joe Baines, the preschool director extensively, who also polled their colleagues. And to just kind of keep reiterating the point that I think the budget committee's made, the chair, Cody, in his own way, making it. It's that we are really focusing on pieces that aren't just cutting for the sake of like cutting something. It's trying to look at operational pieces and leverage. You know, you put a lot of investment in your strategic plan, for example, the whole kind of district did. And so now we, we didn't have a lot of time with that document kind of being finalized when we get to the budget, but it's really kind of starting to go through. One of the benefits of having more time is trying to align the investments in our budgets, something the budget committee, I think, is doing. Aligning our budget with the strategic plan, with the recommendations of the administrators and anything that an administrator, you know, is kind of like if, if, I think if Dr. H came and said this was a terrible idea. The budget committee with the way they're doing it wouldn't have said, well, we just want to cut it for the sake of, of cutting it or changing the ratio. I think it was a very thoughtful discussion.
Karen? So if I can summarize this correctly, what we're saying is that this budgetary change is a positive piece that the administration has agreed will have most likely a net positive impact in education in our pre K, giving them the flexibility to adjust the classes as necessary without, so therefore not impacting education in our pre K in a negative way.
Yeah, I think the number itself, just so you know, the 184 is a section. So I think that that's.
Yeah, some, I think that's an important point to remember. The 184, we're being conservative, I think, too, on that to be safe. What we're really doing here, this is indicating to us that your budget is your policy document. So there's corresponding policy that still needs to be actually changed. Based on your budget assumptions, we're assuming here the reduction of, that this will basically reduce one section. We built in an extra section anticipating the growing pre K, actually a section and a half. Again, adding in January, what we're doing here is thinking that this will very conservatively help offset the growth of that program. So really the 184 is a reduction of one section. And, and Dr. Jones, Mike was able to pull up the data that, that the team collected to share.
Well, so if you're bringing that up the, from there, I just my question is, I mean, we're, we're missing some, some big comparison points, which was Darien, Westport and Stanford. I assume they must also have pre K because it's mandated. But I, so we don't have that there. Those are the ones we often also compare ourselves to.
Yeah, it, it all, it's all dependent on our colleagues and when they respond. And we start our budget so early, it's a little bit harder, but I can tell you like the P E minutes, I was able to add pretty fast because they're all in the middle of budget now. It's just starting for them. So I can certainly try to get more information on this, but we are, we are low and we have been for decades here.
Has this information at all been shared with preschool parents? Because we haven't, that's one area we haven't, I haven't heard from preschool parents on this. And I don't know if they get our newsletters or this is something they might even be aware of yet.
Well, everything that was posted online, it was posted online for everybody. So that's why we're discussing it tonight because we want it. And that's why we put this stuff online. So we would be transparent. That's why you started getting all those emails.
And this is the beauty of representative democracy. Leave the pitchforks at home. Let us do the work.
I say we call.
I believe they were metaphorical pitchforks.
But I am, I'm in, I have my hand up. I'm sorry.
Sorry, yeah, I'm, are we back on? Okay, so go Laura.
So a few years ago, we had a ratio of four children with needs to 11 typical peers. And to keep our sections from growing, we changed the ratio to nine, six. And now we're changing it to 50 50. And I will tell you, you know, preschool parents are, are only in the program for two years. They're there for the threes and the fours. So it's not a change that would systemically impact their children for multiple years of elementary school. But so I think it's hard to really gauge how preschool parents feel about that unless you're a first time parent with one kid going through, like and another one coming along as a sibling. So I would say that if I were told that, you know, my child is going to be in a 50 50 classroom with the same number of adults who are, you know, giving instruction and it's one teacher, two, three paras. I think that that is a tough sell. Honestly, I don't know that I would be jumping at the chomping at the bit to register my child for that kind of a program because it doesn't seem like it would serve either the kids with needs or the kids who are typical peers. So I am wholeheartedly against this change. Even before I was on the board, you'll recall, I was not in favor of changing the ratio. We had a really wonderful preschool program that I really believe prepared all children in the program for academic success. And I just do not feel that this is a change for the better. I just don't. So that's my piece and I would not vote in favor of that.
Dr. Jones?
I know this seems like it's, it's on the capital side, but I do just want to point out that we're going to 16 sections. So when you talk about where we've added staff, pre K has doubled, more than doubled. And I don't even know right now, and it's already December, if we have to add this class in January, February, we're trying to figure out where it's going to go. I mean, people think our buildings are empty. They are not. And for pre K, you need to have restrooms available. It's either got to be in the classroom or you have to be right across the hall. And it, it's challenging with our facilities. And so trying to also slow the growth a little bit, because when you think when you have 16 sections, you go up by one student. That means you're at, you can add another 16 students. So that's a whole nother section that you're absorbing just one little body at a time. So I just, I put that out there because I don't think it's palatable and to this community that we would want to go and start talking about building an early childhood center like they've done in Norwalk, like they've done in Fairfield. I mean, because we have so many capital needs here.
So I'm happy to call, does anybody else have a comment? If not, Wendy?
But isn't it only this? I don't understand. Maybe you can explain. Why are we growing the preschool program? Because isn't it only, it's not really mandated except for the special ed children?
So the program is not growing because of our general education is growing in special needs children. And they actually, so.
I know we have to do it for the special ed kids, but, but.
So by this, so the state says where, where they set their limit is 50 50. So you're expected to have our special needs children in a least restrictive environment, which more emulates a regular classroom. So every time we reach a certain amount in each section, then you have to add another section because you're trying to keep that balance. And again, that's required. And special education is required by, by our special ed pre K is required by federal law. So what we're seeing is a significant increase in children who are qualifying for services that are little, that are three and four years old. And it's a child find process, again, that we're required to do by law.
I understand that part. I'm wondering about the, the typical peers. We have, do we have to put typical peers in that?
Yes, that's why we were talking with the ratio of, of students with needs to the typical peers, because they have to have by state and, and federal law has to be a mix.
But that's why I like changing the ratio actually slows the growth is the point.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody else have a comment or can we call the question? Calling the question. All in favor?
No.
We, we know where you stand, Laura. Okay.
Sorry, I just want to make sure I understand what the motion is. So I vote.
The motion would be to adjust the budget, adjust the pre K ratio with, with a $184,000 change to the budget based on a max class size of 17 and the flexibility for the administration to use between a 50 50 and a 60 40 ratio.
Okay. All in favor? All abstaining? All knows?
No.
Okay, 6-2. That passes.
Uh, next one, Cody?
Did you all say that you wanted to wait on the G H S scheduling? Is that?
Yeah.
Sure, yes.
I have some questions.
So during the committee, the, the discussion really was, can we reduce that 4.0? Remember, we already have built in 2.0 at G H S. This would reduce another 4.0 positions. And we could still discuss if we wanted to, are we going to look at the master schedule? But during the committee, we discussed looking at it this year, not with anticipation that we'd be on fast pace to change in September, but also going into next year to really excuse me, to be thoughtful with the community, but it really is making the commitment to go down another 4.0.
Well, there's no, you didn't put the motion on the table, Cody? I don't know if you need to put, you know, just to have a discussion on it.
Okay, I make a motion to adjust the budget according to a reduction of four G H S positions based on a study of the master schedule to drive efficiencies beginning 2023 through 2025. And that would be an amount of 400,000.
It doesn't, Karen Kowalski seconds. Um, discussion? I have questions, but.
Can I make one comment on this one?
Sure.
The logic here is basically that I think the view and Tony, you, you should weigh in on this, is that the way that the schedule is currently set up is not totally optimal. And basically, if you looked at the allocation of time and teachers, you would need to have an increase in efficiency by changing the schedule of about 1.4%. And the, in the budget committee, when we went through, when we went through this, it seemed that, and I think the reason this was a 301 vote was the belief was that there's more than enough room for improving scheduling efficiencies to, for, for the budget to incorporate this as a conservative baseline assumption. And that, that's really all this is. Remember, this is just a line item that helps guide policy. And so the, the administration will actually work on that. And the only reason it would become an issue for the budget is if the, there's, you know, not even 1% of efficiency in the schedule.
Well, I was gonna say, I know when it was first presented, it was presented as a look at changing the schedule. Not necessarily as a reduction to staffing specifics. So my point in saying this is, and, and I know we won't have answers tonight and some of this is, you know, to me, I sort of would need to have a little more information on like which classes are undersubscribed. Which teacher, not, not a specific teacher, but you know, in which areas are we looking to make? You know, what's the criteria you're going to be using to make the reductions in staff at the high school? Just in generally, you know, I, I know we've talked about when they have certain open blocks and, and things like that where they're maybe not being used as efficiently, but you know, I'd like to just sort of see what classes are undersubscribed, you know, what areas you're sort of looking to make these reductions because I, I do think that will possibly have an impact. Just, just having students at that school and knowing how many times a student is trying to transfer from one class to another. They can't because teachers have hit their, their limits. Not, not every teacher, I'm sure, but it, it fluctuates. There may be classes that are undersubscribed and not being run, and that may be a different way to do it. But I, I'd like to have a better understanding of what criteria you're looking at when you're making these decisions. Cause, you know.
Yeah, the one, one thing that we said, that we talked a lot about in the, and Tony should talk about this, but there's the answer to that question will come about as a result of actually studying it. There's just a practical implication from a budgeting standpoint of if we know we are going to study something and we suspect that something is off, how much, and basically we posed the question to Blaze and team of how much are you willing to bet that you're going to at least discover a certain amount of efficiencies? Because it's ultimately on them. If they say, hey, we think we can achieve this and they don't. And so I think it's probably a conservative number. That's just my take on it. But the idea here is we won't be able to answer a lot of those questions in the next two or three weeks. It's really putting trust in the administration and saying, okay, you know, we believe you that there's some inefficiencies here and maybe.
Well, I'm not willing to place a bet on our students' education that way. So I'd like some more information, even if it's if we're talking about cutting staff, I'd like to have a better understanding of what that criteria is, other than I bet you can find efficiency.
Well, I didn't talk about education. I talked about efficiency. Those are different things, right?
But if you're removing, if you're, you're talking about reducing staff, that's student education. That's why I'm saying it's not about an efficiency.
Efficiency is, when we, let me, it might actually be helpful for me to define the word because I think it's getting lost in translation. We talk about efficiency, we're talking about the amount of time that we that teachers are available to teach versus the amount of time that they're actually teaching. Right? And so the idea is that if a schedule is not set up correctly, you can have a class that is too small or you can have too much time available for certain people. And as was pointed out earlier by saying, we have an administration that's highly competent and has advised us that they think there are improvements to be made here and they think that it's potentially prudent to account for those in the way that we budget.
If I might just add too, this is the way that we approached it for this current year. And it worked really well because instead of going out and trying to analyze, oh, we're going to cut two math teachers and social studies that may not until kids enroll, that may not be the best place. And so what we did this year, and we did it with the middle school as well, is we said, here's where we need, we know we can go down in FTE. We are several hundred, you know, students less at the high school now than we were just a few years ago. We hadn't cut any staff until this current year. So we knew that we have efficiencies within the schedule. We look for natural attrition. The high school's a big staff, so you do get people that retire, that leave. And then you go into the master schedule in that department and you start looking at, okay, where are we under, where are we over? And the other thing they did a really good job of this year, it's not necessarily one whole body. I'm going to go down point three here, point four here. Like we have teachers on the high school that only work for point four or point five. And if someone's retiring, you just may not replace that. And then you take it and you spread it out again. But that it worked really well for them. And I think they liked it because it gives the principals more control over how they're going to actually build their master schedules and staff. So it is the way we did it this year.
Well, I'm happy to send my questions over on that.
So to Karen's concern, based on what you're saying, Tony, it doesn't sound like you're going to have a lot more of that information in the next three weeks. That's that's when students pick their schedules and things like that. That's a spring analysis.
Yes. And it's more than that too. So if we take it back to the budget committee conversation, then also the extensive conversation that Cabinet had about how we kind of came to some of these 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 ideas. It is originally, as as Karen pointed out, it the original concept was we're going to change the actual GH, the structure of the GHS schedule. And then what we kind of determined is that we don't know, we and and in that budget assumption from changing the schedule, bringing in an outside consultant, we talked about uh, Dr. Jones got a consultant for another company that has worked with other districts in Fairfield County to come in and do that analysis. There was a conservative assumption here of of four point oh FTE in that. And we think we still had thought at cabinet level that that was a conservative assumption if we were going to do a fundamental change to the structure of the schedule. What we broadened the concept here at the at the budget committee level is to not necessarily just say we are changing the structure of the schedule. What we're doing here is that we're going to go down the road of extensively studying both the structure of the schedule as well as the the schedule in its entirety, our program offerings and do do a really deep dive that that probably hasn't been done for a long time um, at that level of analysis. And what you would be voting on in this piece would be what is there a budget assumption in that that we would want to make? I do not think, to be clear, that we will have any capacity to have like specifically, we're gonna we're gonna eliminate math uh, by the fourth, for example.
And there's there's a helpful, there's a very helpful analogy in our budget that is also worth considering, which is what we budget for um, uh, what the term, I'm gonna get the term wrong, but the teacher, the yeah, the attrition. So basically, we we have a natural assumption, which is effectively a bet in our budget that um, uh, when we're going to have a certain amount of higher cost teachers leave and we'll replace them with a certain amount of lower costs. Previously, we've budgeted one point five million. We thought that was irresponsible. So we actually, what would look like an increase in spending, but is really just a more realistic assumption. We've changed that to one point one million, right?
One point oh.
One point oh, great. And so that was a a responsible change. This is very similar to that in that we're we're saying we expect something like this to happen given what we're seeing at a high, you know, at a high level. And uh, it it are we expect at the very least, something like this to happen. And so it's not uncommon for us in the budget to have some of these assumption line items, given that we're doing it so far out.
I also know Laura has her hand up, so I don't know if you have anything to say before I call on her. She was waiting to ask a question. Laura?
Uh, mine is not a question. It's just more of a statement of background because in the last budget, there was six point oh high school full time equivalents that were re reduced or eliminated. Um, there was a reduction of seven point seven non certified positions across pre K to twelve. Um, it's not like we haven't seen this, you know, a reduction at the high school before. And in the current budget as it is, if I'm reading the budget book correctly, um, there's a reduction of two sections at GHS and um, I just think that if we're going to talk about the schedule, I if we want to optimize the schedule, that's one thing. If we're using the schedule to reduce positions, that's another. And I just think that those two functions should probably be separate. I abstained on this vote for that very reason. I think we've already seen some reductions at the high school and I don't want to do anything arbitrary. So my um, my preference would be that we look at the high school for um, scheduling efficiency and however, however that happens, but that not be done with a budget approval, you know, sort of hanging over our heads. So I I'm all for finding efficiencies if it's what's best for our students and their education. But I think that this discussion um, really is one that transcends the budget and I I don't feel comfortable um, voting on it tonight. And as I said, I did abstain before.
Yep, Cass, come in.
Yeah, I mean, I think that Laura, you're right, it evolved. And so, and that's why I think we sort of changed the language. And perhaps we should just strike it because they are sort of two separate things, really. Um, and so the schedule, just generally, it's not a topic for tonight because it's not on the agenda. Although I would say that it's something I always believe in analysis. I'm not sure I'm going to be for it or against it. I need to know more about it. So um, but if the fact that we haven't analyzed it in, you know, recent memory is something we therefore should be doing. However, if you're confident that there is, and using your word efficiency carefully, um, that there is room to save four hundred thousand dollars at the high school, not directly correlated with four positions, that is actually just saving four hundred thousand at the high school through maybe just more, um, a higher utilization rate, basically is what you're telling me in each class. Um, then that's probably something I'm going to get comfortable with. But if people feel that there needs to be more analysis, then I'm also happy to bring this back to the budget committee.
I mean, I I personally think that a few of us have additional questions um, before we can wrap our brains around this as a comfort level is what, you know, what this means, but I can't speak for everybody.
I just question how much more analysis we're going to have in three weeks. Yeah.
Can we call to question?
I mean, I I we were not, either we are going to call the question and vote on it, or we're going to ask to hold this off for when we, you know, for the next discussion.
Let's call to question. We can always bring it back in the next discussion.
Well, if you vote on it now, then that's the vote. That's why I'm saying some of us have additional.
We can always make a mo, there won't, but you you've already heard the answer. There's not going to be new information. It's basically when Tony and Blaze say, hey, we think that this makes sense, do you trust them or not?
If some of our colleagues um, are uncomfortable, the um, instead of forcing the issue right now, it might make sense to wait a couple of weeks. They, I'm going to have that question that I have this vote.
But in this particular issue, there will be no new information.
I I hear you, but I believe I'm I'm hearing that there's a um, that there's a, there's a comfort level that we have to get to.
I don't understand. I'm.
What some of the questions that some of us may have may not be based on that specific data that you are supposing it is. That's why I'm saying.
We've, I I I would say from a process standpoint, this was passed in budget committee meeting. There will be, we all agree, there will be no new information. We should vote on this. If people don't feel comfortable voting on it, they should abstain.
Uh, if everybody, I can call the question, but you know, that was the, it didn't, didn't look like, I didn't think this had passed. No, I guess it was a three one.
No, I had voted for it, but recognizing that you guys are uncomfortable, I am going to say no at this point. But I would really like us to get up to speed on this quickly because I am truly a believer in it, but I'm going to let you guys have a moment to think about it further.
Well, I, we can just put it to, I'm calling the question if that's the case.
Wait, wait, can we make a motion to have a consultant look at the high school schedule as Dr. Jones is suggesting? Um, well, I don't know.
She's separating the two, she's separating the two things. That's that's, that was what this entire discussion was about, was that the master schedule will not have any appreciable changes before the start of next school year. She's looking at it in a different manner.
But I'm saying if we are fine with looking at the schedule for efficiency, why do we have to ascribe a budgetary number to that? Why can't we?
Can I respond, Laura? It's it's, I know we have confused things by labeling in this way, but you really just eliminate that idea. This is really about four hundred thousand being saved at the high school. And it's not about four people. Again, it's increased utilization of like a point four to a point seven. And you could have a few of those because, you know, you're not going to run a section because there are now eight kids in it. So it really is about increased efficiency. It has nothing to do with the schedule and that's something that we can talk about at a later time, but let's just remove it because it's obviously confusing people.
I think we can, I think it's, I'm, from what I'm hearing, I think we might be, we can get there, the um, and find consensus around this issue, the probably not this evening.
I am sad for all of you. This is the point of our budget committee. It seems that enough people on here know what the right answer is. And we're choosing to take up future time, which will come at the expense of talking about other things. So I think that is uh, just not good.
Point, point of order is just that the committees make recommendations to the board as the whole, the board as the whole makes the decision. And so people who made a decision on the budget committee may have gotten more information and decided to change their vote as a, as a board. Committee isn't making the vote. It's, you're making a recommendation. That's all I'm saying.
Do you, I get that. The point is, is that we all know what's happening here. And it's, we're going to have to do this whole dance again and waste time to end up where we all know we're going to end up, which is just embarrassing for us. And it's why these boards often don't operate at the level that they should. I'll withdraw my motion on that.
Okay, did you want to talk about reducing physical education hours at K five?
No.
So you don't want to make a motion? That that was a two one one.
Right, I don't, I I actually don't see the purpose in going through this exercise at this point.
Should I make the motion? I'll make a motion to reduce physical education hours K through five for the amount of four hundred thousand.
Yes, Dr. Jones?
Okay, my colleagues were fairly responsive in Fairfield County, so you did get a document later tonight. They were still uh, helping today to populate it. So this just gives you an idea of what the minutes look like. The top portion is the all the public school districts. Um, and I will draw your attention on the far right, some of them that are ninety minutes, but they're on a six day rotation. So they actually go Monday through the next Monday. Um, what we're talking about or what we were, we were proposing, if this was going to be considered at the budget committee, was instead of uh, one, a hundred and twenty minutes, which is um, sixty and sixty, we were looking at forty and forty. So it would still be eighty minutes, which is very competitive here in the region when you look at all of the other districts. The one thing the committee asked for was to also look at private schools. And we spent quite a bit of time talking about that. Um, you'll see like at Greenwich Academy, kindergarten is eighty minutes, but when you get to one to five, it jumps to one thirty five to one eighty. Um, at Greenwich Country Day, they're ninety minutes K two, um, and then three, five is a hundred and sixty. What you don't know, and this just comes from my own experience in a private school, is when I was in a private school, uh, as an administrator, we actually had the end of the day was like sports and P E. But it's in a private school, you can do whatever you want. So you extend the day for the teachers. Every teacher on our staff had to be at sports and it was mandatory for the students. I don't know enough about the structure and how the private schools are structured. It's very difficult to compare. Private and public were just very, were different entities. Um, and then Eagle Hill was sixty minutes for K five. So that's just, this is coming, and my colleagues did check all their numbers today.
So the suggestion here is to go to eighty minutes a week um, on a five day schedule, five day rotation.
Right, that's correct.
And so that would look like, so like in elementary, that would look like two forty minute P E sessions a week? Or is is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
So in elementary, we'd probably go from right now, most elementary, I think it's four days a week for thirty minutes. Is that?
Only the littlest ones. I think it's our kindergarten has like, is broken up a little differently, but um, most of the grades are sixty sixty.
Sixty minutes.
They go for an hour.
They go for an hour twice a week. And the reduction um, um, in P E then would mean more instructional time.
It would. And I think that that's, you know, that's been discussed, obviously, at the administrative level. Um, and it is every time you take kids, you know, to an elective, you're taking away from instruction and and you know, the one, the one data point that really struck me when we were doing the student achievement this year, you saw like even in science, we're last in this whole DURG region, that we don't have enough minutes to get everything in. But you know, where those minutes fall, would it be more numeracy? Would it be uh, more literacy? I mean, that's, it's instructional time that you're gaining back. But again, this is just more than anything, it's that we're just trying to provide the data for the board so you can make a good decision if this is something you want to consider.
So my question, question is, is, I mean, have you spoken to not just the those in P E, but our gen ed teachers? Because I know oftentimes, especially, well, besides all of the positive impacts that P E can have for our students, because it's not just about physical movement, there's a lot that they actually learn in those P E classes. They have a really rigorous curriculum, honestly. It's not just kickball. Um, have we spoken to our gen ed teachers? Because oftentimes, those are the breaks that they have to do instructional planning and looking through uh, data to see which students in their classes need which support in which areas that they use a lot of that time uh, when they have specials and it's, it may be taking away from that. So I just, I know our teachers are always begging us for more planning time. So we're taking that away from that. I, not that I'm saying that it's a instruction, it shouldn't come first, but in order to have instruction, proper instruction, we have planning time. So.
So I would say that we are actually doing a deep dive on all their planning time as well. It's not equal uh, across positions um, at all. It it is, it's very different. And we've had a couple of issues we've been dealing with just in the last month or two on this whole planning time issue. By contract, they have to have a hundred and fifty minutes. They're all, and that's truly not enough. That just happens to be sitting in their contract, but um, but we have plenty of planning time. And the other thing is, we have traditionally, they're supposed to sit through the FLESS class, which is your world language. So if we really didn't even want to lose minutes, you would say you don't need to sit through that anymore. You could actually have that as planning time um, instead of that, you know, that losing that twenty minutes. So pardon? Right, it's another, it would be another efficiency.
Cody?
Um, these are the moments where I think it's very good to remember what the whole point of the strategic plan exercise was, is that we set priorities so that we can then direct the other choices we make towards those priorities. Question for anyone who is on the strategic planning committee. Where, what do you think is uh, most consistent with the strategic objectives we laid out?
That I think you're setting me up, but I can tell you the, um, this has been a spirited conversation in my house with my first grader. The um, who, and we 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 have a disagree, we have a difference of opinion. The um, quite obviously, I think you have to look at um, the the found instructional time very seriously, especially considering how we're trying to meet certain metrics and support certain reading and literacy levels where we haven't. Um, and if we're saying here that we're aligning our P E program with, to make it more consistent with our neighboring schools and other districts in the state, while also increasing instruction. with our neighboring schools and other districts in the state, while also increasing instructional time, I don't think you have here a paradigm, um, that was, um, maybe misconceived by some of the comments tonight about us taking away from kids. I think this is, this is actually strengthening, this sounds like this recommendation administration is actually strengthening the program and supporting the work of the strategic plan.
I agree.
I'm sorry, Sophie.
Okay. Um, I disagree. I think PE is really, really, really important. And I, you know, I say that first as a mother, that I know that my kids really benefit from doing sports, that they need time to get away from screens. And the difference between my 22 year old and now my nine year old going through school, the amount of time my nine year old spends on screens, it's exponential compared to what kids did when, when my 22 year old was nine, right? So I think PE is that much more important. And that's not, I'm not, that's not a fault of the district. That's a situation of our world, right? Like kids are in front of screens all the time. So I think any opportunity for them to get up and move. And I think you do learn in gym. I mean, you learn about teamwork, you learn about problem solving, you learn about setting goals for yourself. You learn about challenging yourself. You know, even we're talking about STEM, there's a certain amount of like physics that you're learning when you're doing PE. There, there's a lot of, you know, challenging your brain. There's a huge amount of science that correlates, you know, physical activity with brain development. And, you know, I haven't had the opportunity to have a discussion with the whole board about this, but I think that there's a huge amount of science that says that, you know, more physical activity is highly correlated with academic achievement. And I recognize that some of our public school peers have less PE. But I think in this case, I would look at what GCDS and GA and Brunswick do. And they do all have gym. And I've talked to a bunch of parents in those schools and they have gym every day, Monday through Thursday. And then Friday is the day that sometimes they don't have gym because they get out at 12. And then they go and play sports all afternoon. So, you know, sometimes it's worth it to look, go see what people do, have the freedom to make these choices, which is what the private schools are doing. So I, I would be very opposed. And I think I've heard from a lot of parents about it. And, you know, to your point, I think it's worth it to think about what the kids think, right? And it's interesting that your first grader is like, of course I want my PE. And, you know, and I talked to my high school about it and he's like, you, no one should ever cut PE, you know? And he's now, he's a sophomore and he's, he's a mature kid and can think about like academics versus PE. And he's like, PE is a huge thing. You also interact with your peers in a way, like we were talking about ALP and all of that. Like PE is an opportunity for maybe the kids who are not as academically gifted, but they're really physically gifted, right? And so they get to be a leader in a different, um, realm in school. And I think that really matters. So I would not be in favor of cutting PE.
Karen?
So I think your point on screen time is well taken, but I think that's a different issue that's not associated with PE. It's just the way we're educating our children these days. And the question should be, if we want our kids off of more screen time, it should be how we're educating our children in what ways, as opposed to compensating that from a physical education standpoint. Look, I agree with Mike and I'm, you know, I would be supportive of this because if I look at that chart that was up there before in comparison to the hours of numbers of PE, and then I look at the number of schools that are ahead of us in academic achievement, they have less PE than we do currently. So I, not really buying into the theory that it makes that big of a difference if we're cutting 20 minutes out of time. The next point is that, yeah, and I know that this is outside of school and it's not associated with every kid. But I, I think, you know, the, the number of activities that kids are in after school, from an after school standpoint and what they're doing, they are moving. And I don't think, you know, that we need to decide from an education standpoint, whether or not an additional 20 minutes versus all the other activities that our kids are overly scheduled for, versus turning that into more on an academic standpoint is the way to go. So I would be completely in favor of, uh, cutting PE. And also on a side note, reevaluating how much use we use of screens in our education process. But that's a different note.
Kathleen, did you hear that?
I mean, I made the motion, I'm likely to withdraw it. However, I wanted to, again, talk about, um, physical education more in the high school. Cause that's really more where I have my concerns than the elementary school. And so can someone confirm if that's state law? Cause otherwise it is.
So I looked at that my first year, um, my first year here. And because it was weird to me that students were in athletic, I grew up in Oklahoma, you know, so. Well, and, and there, if you are an athlete, it's actually during the school day. So you can take PE or you can take, you know, your sport. And you actually don't have a lot of the issues that we do, like after school where we're trying to compress everything and we're running flex, which is really not great. The, where we get into it for sports, every state is different. But here, a lot of our, uh, coaches who are outstanding are not certified teachers. So you can't have anything credit bearing if they're not, they're not certified teachers. And we don't have enough, um, of our staff that could actually do that. That's, that's the tricky part here. And, and we, and PE is mandated in health, is mandated in Connecticut.
Well, I think that's something we can certainly take up on another day, but we're talking about K five. So, so no, no, it's fine.
I'm going to withdraw my motion because it seems that people need more data.
We're just scared to vote on anything.
Okay. Well, the motion on that is withdrawn. So, um, if anybody does have, can put it back on the table, but I, you know, I think it seems like there's some people that want, uh, more information. I didn't know.
Another choice we can make is putting the vote up and losing or revisiting it later, right? That's the choice.
To be fair, I feel like I am deeper in this because I've been on the budget committee. So if my colleagues feel like they need to spend a little more time looking at the data I've been looking at, then I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah, that sheet was really hard to look at.
Sophie?
I, I just, you know, we could talk about this for a long time and we don't need to. But I think looking at those towns is not necessarily a fair comparison because a lot of the towns that were listed are, are wealthier towns that don't have the same, um, low income population that we do. So saying like, oh, they have less PE and they have higher academic achievement, like that seems like a false equivalence to me. I don't know that I would draw it, you know, make that assumption looking at that.
We can look at our strategic objectives. I would ask you, do you want to increase the amount of PE time we have?
I'm not saying that we should increase the PE time, but I think that we should keep it the way that it is.
Should we call the question? And I mean.
Well, Kathleen withdrew the motion.
I mean.
I think we should do an analysis. I think we should do a test run for this year and see if academic achievement increases over the next year. And then you can do a true correlation between whether or not PE has a change.
Yeah. Much as I love that one year, it's not a trend, right?
That's just, this is another example of, we're hearing from the administration, changes, policy changes we can make that will support instructional learning in reading and math, which are core strategic objectives. And we are ignoring that because somehow we think that 120 minutes is exactly right. It doesn't need to be any more, doesn't need to be any less. It's shocking.
Agreed.
Well, I mean, just, just to make a point, we're, we're hearing that and science is one of our strategic goals. And there was a discussion at the next motion, which didn't pass the budget committee, was to reduce ALP science in, in K five. So.
Let's actually put that motion, I'll make that motion because we should talk about that one.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, so I, I take your argument and all I'm pointing at, I, I was, I, I wasn't sure whether I was voting or not. But the point is, is when students are in PE, they're not just running around and kicking a ball. It is a very well thought out curriculum and it does tie into a lot of the other pieces of what they're doing in the school. It also makes students, you know, more available to get their, you know, wiggles out and go sit down and focus in math class. I, I just, that's just, there's a lot of studies for that. So anyway, but if, if the motion's withdrawn, if anybody else wants to put it back on the table, that's fine. If not, we can move on to the next.
I'll make a new motion to, uh, change the budget, uh, for the, I didn't, I didn't like the way this was titled. Reduced ALP hours for science in the amount of 404,759.
I'll second.
So Karen seconded that, Karen Kowalski, just.
I'll just make a quick comment. The reason I don't like the title of it is because we could have just as easily titled it to pre-COVID normalization of this program. This program, as we discussed in budget committee, only exists because of COVID. The question, to the question of, uh, would this have ever been put in place without COVID? The answer was no. And to the question of what is best for operational flexibility or the administration in terms of scheduling, and being able to focus on the core of our strategic objectives, maybe I would, you know, uh, turn that over to, uh, Dr. Jones.
So, so the real change is not just cutting ALP science. And I think that that's probably the way that we worded it, could have been worded better as well. I mean, as we're going through the budget and we listen to all the questions, we are going from, we, we have had for decades, 1.7 at all 11 elementary schools. And we went through several different iterations with that 1.7. We had a year where they had taken science out. It was the first year I was starting. And then the board said, what in the world did you do? Put it back in. So we put it back in with the 1.7. And Mr. D'Amico, I don't want to put you on the spot, but could you, because I know you have a lot of familiarity, would you mind speaking to what it looked like with the 1.7? And I think it was his first year, maybe we had to put it back in or the second. Now, I will say the principals that have reached out on this issue, they would rather dial back a little bit on second grade this week, as they've shared, because they don't feel like that's highly effective, um, in that they don't even really look at second grade until the second semester. And then it's kind of a push in model. So it doesn't necessarily mean we couldn't have science. It just might look different than having the 2.0.
Don't push it. The 1.7 model was a 60 minute reading block and a 60 minute math block. And then we had an interdisciplinary block, which is also known as the science block. That was when we had 1.7. When we evolved because of COVID, we built out larger blocks of time so that the students weren't transitioning back and forth throughout the day. We were trying to minimize cross contamination against cohorts. To go back to a 1.7 model doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to lose science. What it does mean, however, is that we would lose the writing block, which is, uh, attached to the 60 minute reading block currently. So what never seemed to make sense to me was why are we having students, uh, learn at the advanced reading level? And then sending them back for on level writing instruction, because the reading and writing are paired together. And so they're missing the reading instruction that is coupled with the writing. So that's why it made more sense to build out the block so that the students stay for reading and writing together. So when we go back to 1.7, it's really not a loss of science. It would be a loss of the writing block, um, potentially. There, there's all sorts of ways we could reschedule it. Like we could look at the grade two. Again, remember grade two isn't advanced, it's just an enrichment experience. And, and again, it, my opinion, and I was a former second grade, uh, enrichment math teacher, having the students two or three days a week, um, and teaching them the third grade curriculum, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. If you have kids who are ready for the third grade curriculum, then you should receive them every single day. I would send kids back for two days for second grade math instruction, but I was teaching them three days in third grade math instruction. Didn't make a lot of sense. So you might want to take that up and, and, and examine that process a little bit more, uh, in terms of efficiencies as well. Happy to take questions.
Well, so when you were, uh, prior to all, after your second grade, and then when you were running in an elementary school, I, you know, we had science, the students had, in second grade, I don't remember them having science at all. And then the advanced science started with third grade with the interdis unit. And so they had all three, uh, we had to, you had to test into each one individually, um, going forward. So, you know, that would be sort of my question. Are we looking at maybe removing the second grade push in or second grade portion and leaving the upper portions? Cause again, it is in our strategic plan that you were looking at science. We seem to be having such, you know, high levels of achievement in the science area. So I don't know, you know, or you're saying you just replaced it with additional, the writing section for language arts?
Again, it's what is the goal you're trying to achieve? If your, your goal is to try to get to a certain number in terms of reduction, then I would, I would present different options.
I might just speak just very quickly that just as a reminder, the reason this is on here is part of the direction the board, previous board, but, um, and really the town as a whole, was things that were on ARP just for COVID from a position standpoint, we knew were supposed to go away. And this is one that, you know, it's been great, uh, but it was not normal for us to have a 2.0. What was normal was to have a 1.7. So, and, and to Mark's point, we could go back and look at, all right, when we go back to 1.7, we could look at it five different ways. Like what would be the best way? And then make sure the board is well informed about this is the way we would implement the 1.7. But again, it, it really is because it was on a COVID grant.
Kathleen?
Yeah. I mean, uh, this is where I'm staying solid on my vote in the committee. I am all things, the advanced learning program. And, um, I, especially the reading, the writing thing. I've had, was lucky enough to have three children go through all of this. And that change was massive because it made no sense to learn reading and then go back to the general education classroom and learn writing. Those should go together. And I also think that it's the enrichment program and the second grade in science is fantastic. And I am all in on keeping this as is, and I will, will not vote for reducing this in any manner.
I just want to clarify, because I know we have people listening, and we do not have an enrichment science in, in grade two. No.
No, we, that's why I said, science, I don't think it was ever in, in second grade. It was only math and with arts. Michael?
The second grade, um, this is, this is, it sounds like there's, there's some interest in, from building administrators in looking at how we're applying things in the second grade. Is that, is that what we're saying, is that what you're saying? And the second grade, and as a two part question, that's a more recent change too, in certain ways, isn't it? Then we about, then that evolved recently.
To be honest, I mean, this is my fifth year. I think it's looked different all five years, just because in COVID, things were, were different. You know, each year we were adjusting. So I think it would be a matter of going back and looking at, okay, what, what could the 1.7 look like? And Mark could meet with his elementary team to get input from all the principals. And I will say in most, uh, school districts across the country, um, you don't qualify until the end of second. That's really more typical because then they're reading, you know, you're not qualifying somebody, um, earlier who just happened to have language acquisition a lot faster. So usually it is the end of second grade and then you formally start going into third.
Are you talking about all of the program? When you said you typically don't go in until after, at the end, end of, after second, you're talking about language arts and math? As well as science?
Most gifted programs across the country start in third grade. That is way more typical than to start in second grade. I'm not saying places don't do it, but that's what's typical.
Uh, we know we're not typical here. Cody?
Mark, before COVID, was this a program that you would have advocated to put in place?
What portion?
Uh, the, the existing program we have now.
I would have advocated for an extended literacy block, yes.
Sorry. That's not, I don't think that's the question I asked. You would have.
So that's, in essence, that's what we added during COVID was we added an opportunity for, for students who were receiving reading instruction to stay with their advanced learning teacher for writing as well. Again, the purpose, it was a COVID strategy was to minimize cross contamination amongst cohorts, keeping kids in, for longer periods of time with one teacher.
And were you working here before COVID started?
I've been working here for 21 years.
So if we go back to the meetings from BOE meetings pre-COVID, are there examples of you or the administration coming forward and asking for this program?
No.
So can you reconcile those two statements?
We've never formally recommended additional time for the advanced learning program. It would have, it would have meant adding money to the budget when, again, for the 21 years I've been here, we've been reducing money in the budget.
Uh, the, we're sorry. Has the budget grown every single year you've been here? You just said that it's been reduced.
Grown in terms of the amount.
Is the amount of money spent every year more than the previous year?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I just.
You're welcome.
The way you said.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, it's important to be clear about the stuff. The last thing I'd say is, this is a good example of the statement that nothing is as permanent as a temporary government program. If no one was in favor of this before it existed, it existed on the premise that it would be temporary. And it existed as a result of a need for an emergency state. And it existed as a result of a need for an emergency state. The logical thing to do is to undo it and then to start, go back to the beginning and say, what is the most important thing we should do next? Cause the whole idea is that resources are not infinite and that there, this may be a perfectly good program, but it should stand on its own in comparison to the other options we have for the budget. And if we just say that, well, because we have it in place, we can't touch it. Then we're doing everyone a disservice by not comparing it to the other things that we could be allocating spending towards. It's a very inefficient way to, to spend money.
I, I'd like to respond to two points. One is whether or not the budget actually dollar figures have gone up. It's, you're, you're ignoring the fact that we've, every year we've had requirements to, for salaries that have gone up and, and other things in contractual responsibilities and requirements. So oftentimes, even when our budget has gone up 2%, it's actually been not even a flat budget. We've had to cut and cut and cut simply to meet, you know, contractual responsibility. So that I think is what principal, uh, former principal D'Amico is saying. You know, cause he has been here, been here for many years and run school building. I, so I, that's what I'm saying. So when you're talking about the, the numbers going up, we, we still have had to cut to meet those numbers because there are things you can't, that are, you know, not flexible, you can't cut from. And secondarily, just because something was put, look, I'm a big fan of just saying, just because we've always done it this way, doesn't mean we can't look at change, right? Change can be great. I mean, change is hard. People push back against change, but the change that was made, and I, and I'm not speaking for or against this. The change that was made during COVID to add the writing block is not something we've actually looked at data on to see if it had a positive impact on those students or not. And I think before we make that decision, just to cut it to a budgetary number, you'd want, I mean, we're a budget, a board that consistently asks about data. So I don't know if we have that information to look at because we've had two, three years of it. No? I mean, so just because it was brought up because of COVID, doesn't mean that it wasn't a good idea. And now I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm just pointing fact. Mike?
So, so to your point, I think maybe, um, this might be something for the budget committee to, to, to look at. If there is something here, if there's another recommendation coming forth around second grade, or if there's some, some, a different recommendation in the upper elementary that continues the writing block and, um, it doesn't have the, the full COVID, um, contingent. I think it's something that, uh, on the data wise, it might be some analysis here worth looking, worth looking at.
Sophie, you hit your hand up?
Yeah, I just, I mean, we were talking about the importance of STEM and now we're talking about cutting STEM. And so it's just hard for me to understand why we would be considering cutting the ALP science program that's been successful and is beloved by teachers and students. And I, I will say like, you know, COVID did force people to innovate and, and make changes. And some of those changes are positive ones. And, and I think we should consider that. And this sounds like it works well, um, both parents, teachers, students, and even, you know, some of the remarks tonight, like it sounds like it was a positive change. So to me, it seems like we're cutting it to try to get to the BET number, which they provided, because we're just looking for things to cut. And this to me feels like real program, like we're, we're, this is not to the benefit of the students. I mean, it wasn't something that we would have cut unless the BAT had come in with their lower guideline number. Right? We wouldn't be considering it otherwise. And just in terms of doing an analysis to think about how beneficial this has been or hasn't been, I just think one of the things we have to keep in mind is nationally, there's major learning losses because of pandemic. So anything that we look at and we try to judge how effective has this change been post 2020? We also have to keep in mind that students nationally have all suffered, you know, academically, regardless of our best efforts. So it's a little bit tricky to look at that data and say, you know, how do students do in ALP science now? As opposed to what it was in 2017, 18, 19? Because that was just a completely different learning environment. So that's, I'm just to be mindful of that generally across all of the academic analysis that we're doing.
Anybody else Karen?
Yeah, I have two questions. One, how many, and I don't know, how, if somebody has this today, but how many kids does this impact in second grade for ALP? Like how many kids are in the program? That's one question. And the second one is with respect to the, the ALP program, which, by the way, I don't buy into it at all. Particularly in elementary school, because I haven't, I've seen a number of kids that don't get into ALP program in the two through five, uh, part of their education. And then are in all advanced classes in middle school because their teachers had made that recommendation and then continue on. So I'm not sure exactly how much of a difference it makes because there are kids that don't ever test into ALP for one reason or another, and do perfectly fine on in middle school and, and beyond. So the question I have is what data do we have to show the success of this program? And how it's making a difference between those kids that don't test in at the early age versus in, in middle school and beyond? Because if the program is having some astronomical effects, even a minor impact on education, we should know that. But how can you test the difference of the success of this program? Particularly when so many kids don't test into ALP, but then go on to have a very successful, uh, academic, uh, career in the STEM in both middle school and beyond, which is where we do clearly offer advanced programs. And we put in the advanced program in science back into the middle school because for a while they were doing it together. So I'd just be curious if we're actually seeing any difference in running this program.
I would just say, having had students that have gone through that program, one who had to, uh, advocate her way in, uh, because of whatever the reasons. I, I can see the, I, I look at this, the advanced learning program in the same way, same way I look at special education because it is, and it should be covered under the same thing. There are students who have special learning needs, who need to catch up to some of their peers. And then there are students who move at a much quicker pace, um, and absorb information in a different manner. And so that, you know, that's typically how people, when they go look at gifted, and if you go to any of the gifted conferences or advanced conferences, that's how typically people look into, look at this. We are required by the state to acknowledge, uh, and test for giftedness. We, we don't have to provide a program legally by the, you know, state statutes. But this is something that is considered and has been for years as a gem of our program. And one of the highlights of having, uh, you know, our public schools. And so, uh, you know, while I know we can discuss if there may be changes that may be needed, but I, I would hesitate to, you know, question the entire program. They've made a lot of incredible advances in the years. And I know we've, do have things that have, uh, shown the, the difference that it can make for a student. Cody?
Karen, there's a question. It seems like the conversation shifted to if the ALP program should exist or not. But that seems to be different than what the actual budget assumption is. Could, could someone make a clarifying comment on what the budget assumption is versus this ALP destruction boogeyman?
Well, you're talking about making reductions or changes to the program. So in one way or another, because it was originally science.
Yep. My, I'm not talking about cutting the entire program. I'm advocating that I'm fine with making the modification we are here because I'm not sure of the value that it actually adds overall. And no one can say that it does add value, um, particularly going on forward. So I think what I'm hearing is, you know, what I'm saying is I'm for, um, making the modification because I'm not quite sure what advantage the ALP program has in those early years as compared to on.
Blaze, can you comment? Can you just comment on what, what the exact changes are here, the assumption?
The assumption you're voting on right now, and Tony will correct me, but it's 3.3 FTE. It's not positions. It's, it's additional, uh, FTE, point three, right? That was added to a number of teachers to make schedule adjustments.
11 elementaries. Point three was added to go from 1.7 to 2.0.
Yep. And so this is on, actually, we have, we have a chart of the migration from ARP. But it's 3.3 FTE. That's the salary calculation for those people. That's the only budget assumption that's being changed is the point three addition.
So point three isn't going to cut the entire science, the advanced science program out from third, fourth and fifth grade, is it? So then, that, so then that's what we were presented. No, but that's what we were presented as a board was reduce, uh, the initial one was to cut the science. Here's.
No, it wasn't. It never was that.
It, it's, it's been, and maybe, maybe it's wording, but at the budget committee, just for, for clarity, Cody, I'll, I'll add. It's the, we're talking in context of the ARP migration to the operating budget only. And so this is, uh, not reducing ALP science. We're talking about, are we going to migrate? There's, uh, you, you just closed your laptop. We've got the chart of what we moved from ARP, all of the positions. Almost all the positions are special ed positions on ARP that are being migrated outside. There's two areas that weren't ARP. One of them was the financial analyst and the other one is the 3.3 ALP. Out of the 11.8 positions funding that we moved into the operating budget for this reason, to have the conversation. So it's at the budget committee and Kathleen can maybe articulate it better than me. It's not reducing ALP science. It's the point three that we added in ARP. And we built it into the superintendent's operating, uh, budget when we migrated 11.8 positions so that we could have this conversation with the board. So it's point three FTE at each elementary school.
I, Kate, if I can say, I think the science came out of, um, you can't have a 1.7 and run the 2.0 program. So if you're going to keep the writing, you're going to have to adjust something. And I think that that's why that whole discussion was happening. So it, it's just being aware that we can't run the program we have right now with 2.0 that we ran during COVID. If we cut back to the 1.7.
And in ARP, it's been, uh, it's been referred to as science for that reason, but it's not necessarily do. The ARP documentation says ALP science, but so it's just been referred that way. So, but that's very correct.
And just to help really clarify, you're a student going through the day. We go from the COVID program to attend to this change implemented. How would your time allocation in the day be changed?
Yeah. So pre-COVID reset, you'd go back to 60 minutes of math, 60 minutes of reading. And then you'd have the science block, which is 30 minutes, which is, uh, unit by unit. We alternate between science and social studies.
So where is the writing block?
The writing block is absent pre-COVID reset.
But what does the writing block come at the expense of? If we, if we.
The point three, the reduction in point three.
Okay, wait, so sorry. Currently, right now, the amount of there, right now, there is how much time in the reading block?
90 minutes.
And that.
Cause it's a reading, writing block.
And that replaced time that was previously devoted to science?
No.
Now, what, what is, what is the?
So the best way to look at it is pre-COVID versus COVID. Pre-COVID, there was a 60 minute ALP reading class, a 60 minute ALP math class, and then a 30 minute interdisc, otherwise known as science. In COVID, we added an additional 30 minutes to the blocks. So we had a 90 minute STEM block, math and science, and a 90 minute humanities block, reading and writing.
And so my question is, you added that time, but the school day didn't get longer and we know PE didn't get shorter.
No, that, the, the advanced learning students just stayed in their advanced learning class.
So, so, but it, it's just shifting time. I'm just trying to get it to be really clear. The time in the student's day, pre and post change, it went from, they had time in a non-ALP science class that's down. An ALP science class, is that the change or?
No, they added the writing block.
Right, they added the writing block.
That's the only change. They took, they had ALP science already. And then when we went into COVID, to make sure that the students could be within their own, uh, little cohort, they added the writing section. And students used to have reading, ALP, and then they would go back to the, their traditional classroom and with Gen, the Gen Ed teacher would teach the writing portion. So they merged those two together in a longer block. Does that make sense?
I think so, but so we're.
Reading and writing were separately taught. They merged reading and writing so that the advanced, you know, the ALP students had those together with their ALP teacher. And the Gen Ed students had it with their Gen Ed teacher, which also helps reduce the class size for their, and were one-on-one attention to the students. And, you know, I, I think that, that was the intention in, in a lot of, you know, and also keeping them as a cohort.
So the impact of having point three less ALP teacher would be that there wouldn't be the dedicated ALP writing and the writing would be done.
By the homeroom teacher.
And is that for all grades or only one grade?
That'd be for grades three, four and five.
Grades three, four and five, okay. So it's interesting that, I mean, I don't know about your guys' inboxes, got a lot of emails about, don't cut the science program, don't cut the science program.
Well, that's why we're asking questions because that's how it was positioned, which was a reduction to science. So that's what we're learning tonight.
I think on the PDF, I think the PDF, it's worded incorrectly.
I wanted to word it COVID normalization.
Yeah.
But, but I think it still goes back to, if you go from 2.0 to 1.7, something has to go. You can't fit the same things in. So if we want to keep math, ELA and writing, you are not going to have that 30 minute interdisc or science. And that's where it originally was an outgrowth of, something has to go. And maybe it would be better to actually have math, ELA and writing than to have that 30 minute science. Because we're also, uh, we've updated our whole media programming this year to add more STEM. I know when Tara Fogel comes back, they have all new equipment from robotics to all kinds of stuff they're doing in media that's new. And I'm not saying it's the same, but all, I just want to be really clear. You go from 2.0 to 1.7, something has to change.
My point is, I think we marketed this the wrong way, so to speak, right? We're talking about a reduction, but it's not, it's right, it's normalizing it back to pre-COVID time. And instead of saying that you're reducing science, they've gained writing, right? So it's not, it's, it's not that we're cutting from the program. We, we modified and we add something, we made, we made a revision. They have something else that has come in, in place of science.
Yeah.
And that's why people are frustrated and unhappy because it just sounded to, to parents that we were cutting science. But there was not, the lack of understanding is that something was added during COVID. So they've gotten something more. It's not that we're reducing, we're just normalizing.
That's correct.
Right sizing.
I, I think there, another way to look at it is, you know, there were some good things that came out of COVID. And what we learned was having the kids together for reading and writing made sense. And although I understand your point of, well, we wouldn't have advocated for it. We had midterms before COVID. We've learned through COVID that maybe midterms aren't the best thing. And now they're advocating for, uh, you know, reconsideration of that. So again, fair point. We never brought it up that we should have a longer block. But has there been benefit to it? Yes. Can we put a metrics on it at this point? No. In terms of putting a metric on, are the students in the ALP program accelerating at a faster pace than their, their peers? The metric we would have to look at is our standard achievement results.
This sounds like a great, this one sounds like one of the reasons why we want to do extend more time for the budget committee.
So yeah, I was going to say, maybe that's something that we, so we didn't make the motion for that. Well, Kathleen, you did make.
I made it.
Cody made.
I'll withdraw my motion.
So if we withdraw the motion, I think this is something, if we have questions, we can certainly send those in and.
This time I will draw it with a good attitude though.
I can't say for everybody else, but I appreciate that. Uh, are there any other motion that you'd like to make on the budget from the budget committee? Okay.
It's more of a general question. And it's sort of what you triggered it when you said we're have to like analyze some of the positions that are coming back in from the America Rescue Plan. And I feel like there hasn't been, I know that special education is mandated, but that is a bulk of what's coming back. And frankly, that's driving the biggest increase in this budget. And to the extent that we don't increase the pie, what this is starting to show you is that all of the programs will be cut. And I really think that we need to do that analysis then to understand like all this additional special education clause, which again, I know are mandated to an extent. So I need to understand the effectiveness of what we're bringing back in because we do really need to look at it versus the other things that we're questioning then at this point, unless we are all willing to increase the pie in its entirety. We are just going to keep chopping away at the, at the rest of the, of the budget is the reality.
Yeah. I, and I think that's a good, uh, coming up with what we're going to determine that effectiveness measurement and how we want to evaluate some of those positions and programs is another good task also for the budget committee to help come up with what we want that migration to, to kind of look like. Because it's, uh, it's a hard program at the moment with how we're migrating to measure.
I think Kathleen brings up an excellent point. One of the things that we've talked about, one of our goals from the budget committee standpoint is to work on like a multi-year forecast, which it will just be more or less an extrapolation, but we, we do know a lot of information that can help us kind of shape, shape this. And I think it will show a degree of that, but it'll help inform the decisions we make year to year because we'll be able to have a better sense of what to also expect. And it's a really. And it's a really, uh, it should lead to some lively debate in town.
And, and I think it might be good to point out too, that we did talk a lot about like programs tonight that the budget committee reviewed for cutting. Um, and since we are extending the time, one of the benefits of this is the, the budget before the board today is not, uh, I think simply, there was a lot of logic that went into Dr. Jones' budget. We, we met extensively with cabinet for months on program evaluation to keep things logic driven. We're continuing that conversation. Some of the, some of the things we leave and the, the Dr. Jones left in, in the budget are really good policy level considerations that come before the board, like the ALP conversation about moving it from ARP to have this conversation. Something that I think we also need to remember is in the operating budget that's before you, we are also making significant investments in chronic pressures that have resulted in freezes for almost every year, uh, in the operating budget. So tonight, you know, we are talking a lot about, you know, pressure points and programs and, and items that we're cutting. But there still hasn't been, at least, at least so far at the budget level committee, since a lot of, half the board hasn't been there, this notion of like cutting things to hit 4.3% for example. We are, we've, we've also talked, Cody pointed out something and it's, it's why we need some more time on analysis. Patrick just did this really comprehensive analysis on teacher salaries to show, um, just how, uh, top-heavy of the salary range we are. We do not have churn like we might have assumed churn in prior years. The churn number that's been in the operating budget, um, is, is a meaningless number at this point. Um, and so we are making a significant investment in looking at phasing that out. Cody pointed out, we're adding $550,000 back in just the salaries. In, in the budget because of the analysis. We may find out from doing more top-heavy analysis that churn, as we call it, is an area that we might even need to make even more investment because the number we have in there right now, a million dollars is not tied to anything at the moment. And that's a conversation, it's not just this conversation of cutting to hit a number for the sake of hitting a number. It's been, how are we going to make logical investments of our resources on, on both sides of the, on the coin? And there are some areas that we've also talked about, do they need to be increased to keep in line with the strategic plan that the board passed? As well as, you know, some of the other areas that we have better data on, on areas that we just haven't had good data because we had some messy, uh, underlying, you know, information.
Well, that's why I said, I think this discussion tonight, and I support exactly what Cody was saying, is it has been very enlightening for not just us, but for general public as well. Cause it is not just, we're not just looking at a bottom number, right? And that's what Cody was saying, right? You weren't looking just at a number cut. You guys are looking at this in a much deeper dive in ways that, you know, makes sense logically for the program, for the students as well.
Yeah, it doesn't make me any friends with the BT, but I don't care about their guideline number. That's the nice thing about not participating in local politics ever again.
Well, so I don't know if anybody else has specific questions on the budget in front of us, since we've asked to, for a little bit more time to give our administration a deeper dive. Does anybody else have any other questions before we move to the next item? Yes, sorry.
The only thing I would ask is if we still stay under a tight timeline is to submit specific questions that you still think you have as early as possible. So that we, we have the holidays coming up, a lot of staff are going to be gone on the winter break. That puts a lot of, there's not a lot of time between now and what we're looking at for us to do analysis. So if you have questions, if you could send them to Dr. Jones as fast as possible, uh, or to your colleagues on the budget committee to help direct what the next couple of meetings might look like in a short time period.
And wait, can I say, add one more thing? Just you, you guys have done such an amazing job with all the analysis. It's like just supremely good. It's not just questions, but also ideas. Because if you have, the coolest thing about your team is that when someone has an idea, like the next day, you're like, here's all the data about it. And so ideas can really be helpful and, um, yeah, no, but it was great. Um, so yeah, just to give you guys a little bit of a plug, but also encourage folks to email ideas, including the Pitchfork Public. Instead of just sending like copy and paste emails, send us an interesting idea, we'll read it.
Well, I was asked, uh, if we could take a 10-second pause between now and our next subject so we can move ourselves back to wifi. So.
That would give me my phone back then.
Yes. So I'm taking a pause now, now's the time to stretch.
I think somebody has to make a motion to get to go to wifi. Um, cause the budget is on as an action item. And so, yeah, I think we just for.
That's fine, we can.
Procedural purposes, we have to make a motion to postpone it.
I will, I will happily make a motion to postpone our vote on the budget. The food service, do we have to do the food services? Or that be going with the, that goes in with the regular budget?
Yeah.
It's fine. Well, no, are we back on?
It's not.
Okay, we're back online, so.
Your audio is very choppy. And now you're frozen.
Well, we, we still have a need progress here, so we'll, you know. Putting it on the table.
Okay. I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the proposed fiscal year 2025 food services budget as presented, presented on page 190 of the superintendent's fiscal year 25 budget.
Discussion? Any discussion going once, going twice? Okay, I will happily call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes eight zero. Okay, perfect. So then we can move on to the JCHVAC Ed specs. I'm happy to make the motion to approve her second. Okay, thank you, Karen. Is there anybody that wants to, is there a discussion? Does anybody have questions? No questions, okay. Laura, nothing, okay. I'm happy to call a question then. All those in favor? Laura?
Sounds good.
Okay, I'm going to move on. Okay, so that's eight zero. Our next agenda item is the Board of Ed, Board of Education meeting calendar. I know we've been presented this before, were there any changes, Dr. Jones? Before, where I put a motion, do you want to put a motion on the table?
I make a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 Board of Education meeting calendar as presented.
Happily second that. I don't know if you want to point out if there's any changes from the last time we saw it.
No changes.
The, the one, the one thing I am skeptical of is the budget hearing meeting. The last few been, that has not been very well attended. I do wonder, I don't think we necessarily need to change anything on this document, but I do think it's worth rethinking how, how we do that maybe, because there was nobody here this time. They, um, um, so how we present the budget, it might be something to think about. It's a weird November-ish timeframe.
Instead of policy, I think we're required to present. Have a, are you talking about what the, the date that was presented?
Not the hearing, the presentation, that initial presentation.
Yeah, I mean, that had, that has to do with the whole timeline of when we have to get it to the first segment. So it always falls within that same area.
When we presented operating and capital at the same time, it was a much more well-attended meeting. I can say that for sure.
But I think if you look at tonight's meeting, it was very well-attended. So once you start talking about it, and people know what, I think that very first one, people, a lot of people still watched it from home. Um, but unless they hear something scary, they're, they don't show up.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
Me, in the back.
Laura?
I would say, um, tonight was maybe not a full house in the room from what I could see, but there was over a hundred people attending the meeting, listening in while we were discussing the public comment and other aspects of the budget.
Yes, well, now that we've gone virtual, we get a lot of, a lot of people who, uh, log on to listen.
Over a hundred is pretty cool.
Okay, does anybody else have a, a question or comment or would, can I can call the question? I'd be happy to call the question. All in favor? Laura? No, her hands up, okay. Eight oh. Uh, the next item, uh, for discussion is our agenda plan. And I know we need to talk about when we're going to vote on the budget. So I'm hoping people can take a look at, uh, maybe Thursday, the fourth or Wednesday, the third. But is there anything else we need to add? Does anybody else have anything we need to add to the calendar that we can, for, for agenda planning purposes?
No, I, I notice it's still not on there, but I know we talked about having an academic update in that February retreat.
I thought that had been added, so I will make sure, oop, making note of that. You wanted to add an academic update to February 8th board retreat, correct? That's one, yeah. I know we've talked about that before.
And that academic update should not, um, should include the special ed report that we asked for previously to.
Right.
Yeah, which is not supposed to be where we stand on implementing our.
It's where we are with also CAC and, and other things. So instead of just the executive session, we'll add a discussion.
Yeah, I mean, it, the, and then I, you know, if, if Dr. H needs some more guidance on that, I think the entire part of that is to see the academic trends year over year with respect to our children in special ed to make sure that they are achieving their academic goals. Irrespective of, I don't want to see the checklist of, we've implemented this, we've implemented that as we, as they go through the special ed, um, program and all of the goals that they were supposed to reach. What I think the focus should be on and what we talked about before, and I think what Dr. Stacy agreed on is we want to see from an academic achievement with respect to special ed.
Oh yeah, I mean, I'm, what I had asked for and what we'd spoken about, I think last time was doing it, what we used to have with, we had a much thicker review of the entire special education program, um, which we had put to the side when we were doing stuff on the audit, but we're mostly completed there. So we do need to have a much, uh, more in-depth data-driven report. Mike?
The, um, in our board goals, we have, um, the review of, um, community connections and, um, I'm blanking on the other one. Windrose.
Windrose and.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's on the agenda plan.
Is that something you would want to? Okay, because it, it could be something we can at least have a, a start of a discussion because it would tie into that sub, the same subject on February 8th. But let us know if that date works for you.
Yeah, I need to space them out and I need to work with the senior team. And even on the academic update, I'm not really, I'm not really sure what you're actually wanting that night. That was different than what they just presented a while ago, so.
Well, what she.
I'll need more clarity.
Um, we can, we'll happily, we can send that to you via email and we'll, Mike and I can always meet with Stacy also.
Academic team update.
Thinking less about the, the achievement data and more on, um, what different buildings are doing in response to that, like the, you know, how the current action plans are, are being implemented.
The SIP plans?
Action plans.
Wait, where that's what the SIP, the school improvement.
Yeah.
Okay, we can work on that. I do want to point out that on January 18th, I may be pulling off the K-12 ELA, just so you know. And that's simply because right now we're doing a lot of work. It's the same person, Kim Palladino, with the waiver. We were all in a, a very long meeting today and, um, we are, we will be requesting additional meeting with the state. So she, she may be inundated.
Um, so did you guys have an opportunity to take a look at your, uh, calendars?
January 4th is.
Can we do January 4th?
I don't think so.
Okay, well, we'll be back in time. Whomever it may be, okay. Um, all right, well, does anybody else have anything else they need to add to the agenda? Uh, planning, nope. Well, then, since Laura's not here, I'm not going to let her call the question. Who else, who would like to call the question? Would one of our new board members like the, the honor of adjourning?
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Nope, nope.
A sense of the meeting.
Oh, that's right.
Internet.
That's right, we lost it. Sense of the meeting, sorry, just kidding, we're going back to the sense of the meeting.
It just needed sense of the meeting of the HVAC for the RTM that got cut. Real quick, it's $411,055.
Yes, I had pulled it up and it's been sitting here in my background. Four, yes. So I'd like to just take sort of, if we could just take a sense of the meeting that should the, uh, entire interim appropriation not pass, that the board would support a reduction to have, to 411,000, zero, $411,055 to cover the, the fees required to rent the emergency HVAC temporary unit at Hamilton Avenue. Okay, Kathleen, Kathleen is seconding. Any discussion? No? Okay, I'll call the question. Well, it's not a question, sense of the room. How does, would everybody support? I think Laura went to sleep, okay.
No, she's there.
So she said yes. Oh, I can't, okay, I can't see behind all the stuff on here.
My hand is up.
Okay, just, who wants a second? Wendy? All right, all those in favor of adjourning?